Dear most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank thee for another day that you's blessed us with, dear Father. We just thank thee for each one that's here, dear Lord. We just ask you to just be with us, dear Father. We just ask for your guidance and your wisdom on each decision that's made here today, dear Father. We just ask the blessings on the one in our community that has lost love, dear Father, and needs your touch today. Just be with us, watch over some guys. We just ask these things.
George, you want to?
Gute County Board of Supervisors met in a regular first of the month meeting in their boardroom at Gute County Courthouse in town. On the sixth day of March, twenty twenty-three at ten o'clock a.m. Sheriff in Gute County held a meeting and instructed all Charles Gollum boys up in prayer. President of the meeting included the following: Charles Mose, President of the Board, Charles Gollum, Vice President. Kenneth Harrison, George Alexander, Jackie Johnson, George Hayes. For the board, Steve Seale County Administrator, Jason May, and Board Chairman also present. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harrison voiced his second motion to approve. To accept the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three board minutes is corrected. The motion carried unanimously. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harrison voiced his second motion to approve the document presented and recommended by the comptroller. The motion carried unanimously. Kenneth Harrison made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced his second motion to approve travel from Johnny Reed and Betsy Nelson to attend to Mississippi VA. CBSSO training in Columbus, March twenty-one through twenty-four. Kenneth Harrison traveled to Dixonburg for Bonardi Conference meeting, March twelve fourteen. Kenneth Harrison and Charles Mose traveled to Biloxi at April eighteenth to the twenty-first for MPDD conference. The motion carried unanimously. Two bids were received. We used Dell computers. One bid was received from Melanie Thornton, and she bid a hundred and five dollars each for two computers. Other bid was from Joy Abels, and she bid a hundred each for two computers. Joe Alexander made a motion. Jackie Johnson voiced his second motion to accept the bids of each bidder. Motion carried unanimously. Two bids were received on one surplus, forty-two forty, John Smithfield. John, dear tractor property of beat two, Brian Frink, bid seven thousand fifty-nine dollars. Brian White did nine thousand five hundred fifteen dollars. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harrison voiced his second motion to take bids under advisement for the next board meeting. Motion carried unanimously. Road crews of beat three, beat five, buried horse on Joe Freeman's property located at twenty-nine seventy-two Melvin Hicks Road. A cow on Dennis Scott's property located at forty thirty-two Taven Road, two three. Two horses on Shannon Braddock's property at two sixty-nine TV Road. And a cow on Handy Alexander's property at eighty-two fifty highway four eighty-nine corner. Dr. William Miles, Dr. Watson, and Dr. Melinda Barnes recommended animals be buried into possible infectious or contagious diseases and possible health reasons. Certificates are included in these minutes. Note that the length of Justice Court fines collected for the month of January twenty-one, twenty twenty-three to February twentieth, twenty twenty-three were one thousand five seventy-six twenty-six. American municipal services settled. Eight hundred and six dollars and two cents for the same period. There were three hundred seventy-three new cases opened during that period. We fined an amount of one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred seventy dollars, twenty-five cents eleven. Eight thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents from the new cases acquired. There were thirty-five missed in the period here in Charlotte. Okay. We're reading. Note that the board president signed amendments to agreements to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance service for Gute County. Agreement between Gute County, Mississippi, and AmeriPro EMS and Mississippi LLC, this agreement. Good Friday replaces Confederate Memorial Day as county holiday. Jackie Johnson made a motion. Kenneth Harrison voiced his second motion to adopt Good Friday, which is April seventh, twenty twenty-three this year, in place of Confederate Memorial Day, which is scheduled to be April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. A holiday for county employees. The motion carried unanimously. Note that Ricky Harrison of the County Department of Archives met with the board and invited him to Olden House on March sixteenth at eleven o'clock a.m. at the county archive building. Charles Gollum made a motion. Kenneth Harrison voiced his second motion to approve the tax assessment changes and assessment. Home says presented to the board. The motion carried unanimously. Note that beat five supervisor Jackie Johnson requests that the board attorney supervise the lead of the Bay Springs telephone company. At the Bay Springs requesting internet lines and equipment be moved off county issue right away. Page three, Redman County Building lease dissolved and approved. Jimmy and Alec, Anna Alexander, owner of Redman lease on county building and pay their loan with their attorney. Will someone submit to the board and express their interest in dissolving their lease on county building at one-ten East Ninth Street, known as Redman and Decatur Sharp Factory? The Alexander's attorney will draw up the necessary papers for the board to review. Additional purchase of rubber tire backhoes from beat one accepted. Charles Mose made a motion. Charles Gollum voiced his second motion to accept one or more additional four-twenty rubber tire backhoes from previously accepted bids from Caterpillar. Beat one had previously accepted one backhoe. The motion carried unanimously. Note that air conditioning representative met with the board concerning ongoing problems with the courthouse air and heat. Rule of fire protection agreement approved. Brian Taylor met with the board and discussed the fire department's joint task force formation and standard operation procedure for the group. Joe Alexander made a motion. Jackie Johnson voiced his second to the motion to approve rule of fire protection agreement. The motion carried unanimously. Note that pay for Turkey Creek Water Park to be discussed on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Note that beat one supervisor April will do in-town work for the town of Cator. Note that employee changes. Brandon Law, Gute County Sheriff's Office pay increase five thousand a year. Tommy Stevens, Gute County Sheriff's Office, part-time. Eleven dollars an hour. Greg Jenkins, Gute County Sheriff's Office, full-time, ten dollars now. Joe Alexander made a motion. Jackie Johnson voiced his second motion to recess until March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at nine o'clock a.m. The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Page one, do we have any corrections or changes? Page two?
Page two, I guess I have a question. Good Friday just replaced with this year?
That's what I was gonna do there.
Way to read it there.
Sorry.
That's all. That's all you've discussed.
So unless we do something next year, we'll burn back. Ask a question.
He does, and statutes allow the counties to substitute.
Page three? Page two, seven.
Page eight.
All right. Thank you. I think we need to do the bids first. I think we're supposed to be doing bids for asphalt, lay down, hauling.
This one's gonna be from Triple A.
Triple A?
Yeah.
Okay. If we might have got it right this time. We, not you, us. Option one, county provides asphalt and hauling, and the contractor lays asphalt only. Ten thousand tons or less, forty-four dollars. Well, it's forty-four dollars for all three. Forty-four. That's on the contractor mix as well as the asphalt by meal. Everything's the same.
Option one, Andy?
Yes, no.
With y'all buying asphalt, that doesn't change the meal market price.
Under option two, county provides asphalt, contractor hauls and lays the asphalt. Fifty-nine fifty across the board. Fifty-nine fifty. Again, this is triple A. We've got an option three where the contractor provides the asphalt, hauls the asphalt, and lays the asphalt.
That's what I wanted.
One? Are you sure? Hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Was that in the advertisement?
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
And one?
What was that?
That's on the contractor mix, one seventy-six, and on the nine point five, one ninety-two. Everybody good? Again, this is triple A. We have another?
Yeah, we've got three more.
Three more? Okay.
This one is from Walters Construction.
Okay, all right. Option one. Contractor mix is sixty-nine twenty-five.
Just money?
This is providing asphalt and hauling asphalt. Contractor lays hauling.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine twenty-five. And that's across the board for contractor mix as well as the nine point five. Again, this is obviously the county providing the asphalt and hauling, and the contractor lays. Option two, county provides asphalt, contractor hauls and lays the asphalt. For both contractor mix and the nine point five mill, that's one thirteen, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents per tonne across the board. One thirteen forty. Moving to option three, where the contractor does it all. Contractor mix is two sixty-six eighty. Two sixty-six eighty. For the nine point five mill, it's two eighty-seven twenty. Two eighty-seven twenty. This is Walters Construction out of Wall. Everybody get it?
This one is from R and L Unlimited.
R and L Unlimited. Oh. How you doing?
Great. Light.
You have a torch? We're open to bids for asphalt.
Right. I wish I'd been like just a little bit later.
R and L Unlimited out of Jackson. Option one, county provides the asphalt, county hauls the asphalt, contractor lays hauling. Twenty-five dollars a tonne. For contractor mix. And nine point five, so it's across the board. Twenty-five dollars a tonne across the board. They did not bid on option two. They did not bid on option four. This is R and L Unlimited, okay? No, you go ahead.
This is, uh, Slocom Construction.
Slocom, and I don't remember how it was this eighteen.
Foxworth, Mississippi.
All right, option one, county provides asphalt and hauls it, contractor lays it only. It's twenty-eight dollars a tonne for ten thousand or less. Twenty-seven dollars a tonne for ten thousand to twenty thousand. Twenty-six a tonne for over twenty thousand. And that's across the board with contractor and nine point five. Everybody get it? Twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six. Option two, county provides the asphalt, contractor hauls and lays the asphalt. Forty-three dollars. Forty-two dollars. Forty-one dollars. Same applies for contractor and nine point five. Forty-three, forty-two, forty-one. Contractor provides the asphalt, hauls the asphalt, lays the asphalt. Apologize, this is hammered at the end of the floor. Ten thousand less is one seventy-one fifteen. Ten thousand to twenty thousand is one seventy, one hundred and seventy dollars and fifteen cents. Over twenty is one sixty-nine fifteen. That's what the contractor makes. Sixty-nine. We're doing again, ten thousand or less, one seventy-one fifteen. One seventy fifteen, one sixty-nine fifteen. The nine point five is one eighty-one fifteen. Then ten thousand, one tons, to twenty thousand is one eighty fifteen. And over twenty thousand is one seventy-nine fifteen. Everybody get it? Y'all will take these underdogs?
I'm not supposed to take them underdogs.
All right. Thank everybody that bid, and appreciate that. Mr. Moe?
Yes, sir.
Is that the first thing on the agenda?
I didn't get it. Do you want to go down it? If you could put that on for feet far, do we need to do that, or everybody here?
There you go.
Option one is R and L, option two and three are Slocom. Say that again, Steve.
Option one is R and L. Option three is, then, two and three are Slocom.
Ask a question.
Can we accept them all? We in United States, you're supposed to get somebody to show up. I don't like that hesitation, just letting her.
Well, you won't be able to, because you're gonna be, you're gonna wind up getting a hundred dollar difference on you. Buying and laying the dollars.
I'm just, I mean, you know, uh, how we've been begging folks for the last few years.
Let's ask the builders, or that's.
I got one question on, uh, just listening to some of them numbers and knowing it. Where are y'all as far as it is a licensed insured contractor, uh, within the state of Mississippi? Is that a requirement for y'all to have somebody that like the asphalt?
I probably didn't put it in the bids back then.
Because if, if that's the case, y'all gonna have to check some of them people, and I don't know how that's gonna turn out for y'all on some of that stuff. I just need to know where the numbers at, because I squeezed it tight.
Well, I couldn't get it like he said.
He's asking if we require everybody to be licensed.
To be insured.
And insured. And I did see a certificate from one of them. One of the vibes, certificate, I don't know who it was.
Did you have one?
I didn't provide one.
You didn't provide one?
All that to, I mean, I'm licensed within the state of Mississippi, general contractor.
You know, I think this has been the hardest thing I've ever done. To get this bid, and it's all sound bad. We've done it about five times, and it's pretty obvious that I don't know.
Well, I understand. I was just asking about y'all's case, if somebody gets on y'all's roads and there's some kind of fact.
Well, it's a good question.
Valid question.
Good question.
That might be something y'all wanna check into before y'all get piled up with some kind of legal fraud.
I think we would need to follow up with each contractor to verify insurance and license, wouldn't we not?
And I will today when I leave.
Hold up. Do you mind coming up? We got, uh, getting you grounded out.
When I step out of here and I make a call to my office, I have my license and insurance and all my validation sent to Miss Tammy's email.
Okay. The other contractor, we have a representative for him.
I don't think anybody else.
Okay. But now he gives them all right.
We give it once.
This is triple A. Walter says he is a nice triple A right there, so he got one. So that's two of the four that you know are licensed.
I'll make mine, because I'm licensed immediately when I step out of here, so.
We're trying to be talking about this, don't we?
We, uh, we too know that.
I'm not taking what we need and make another, except something I forget about doing. This has got to be, gotta work.
If he can get the, his information.
Y'all need to step out and have that sent right now.
Well, you can do it, and let, we've got it under, we're taking it under advisement right now, Tammy. Uh, when he takes backs, whatever they need to, then, uh, I guess if we're gonna ask one to do it, you might wanna make a call to the rest of them and see if they can provide that.
You might want to tell them. Wasn't called a bid, but if we're gonna ask one to do it. Yeah, we're gonna have, ask one to do it. I think that doesn't have to be something that's actually described in the bid. That's just a part of being, knowing you're out working, doing business. That's a requirement.
See, that's what we thought, too. That's why we didn't put it in the bids.
That's not something you have to clarify. That's just something that anybody else knows.
Check all this.
To do business, that doesn't fall back on you guys.
Yeah, if they provide for it, then we make a decision. I haven't made, uh, we don't miss anything that day.
Yeah, we all, I just like.
You have to, uh.
I'll make this phone call right now. Make sure that information's sent over.
Was y'all going down on the land Rodney Stams?
I know where he's going.
You know, you can put my cheek there, man, going down. I thought already been Rick Hood come up this morning.
Good morning.
As a representative, anything? Good morning, guys. I'm looking for good news. If it's not good news, I will actually leave.
I'm not sure it's so far.
I'm gonna go over. These issues, we thought, good things together. A good representative, here's what Captain said on my board. That's his board. Mr. Charles. That's basically our rating information. Steve, Kay and I have put in a bit of work this year, given up the last year. Part of the industry has been trying to get commercial property insured, such as the property limits. And it's been quite a mess. A lot of industries out there, a lot of them, it's timeless, commercial properties that nationwide is under insured. Why don't you just find a place and jump in and start telling us which way, what you wanna look at? All our rating information? Oh, yes, please. There's where we have increased our property values in the last year. Almost eight million dollars, and that's been through our appraisal process. And we've had two since we've been involved, massive. There's a thirty-three percent increase in PI, the total insured value. And then we have a, that's the auto physical damage is the second one, which we've lost some vehicles. We got rid of seven, so we're down. And we have our numbers, although we've been, our employee and state of the state, same. Law enforcement, legal. We've been decreased our employees, so we've had a fifty percent decrease in employees there. And so there's our rating information that we use. So we go through the sort of that is patched out. There's some cyber changes, some earthquakes and other, but the dump situations that are, uh, falling into the toll. But in our quote, we'll start. On the second page, you see the values of the property. This, uh, this information you got here based on what, right? Yes, Steve is very involved in that. We had a contractor, uh, contractor appraisal that's been out, and we expected to build it. Okay, go ahead. We do have the deductible on property, which is, uh, we've kept since we've been involved, massive. Our property limits is sixty-two, our, there's our deductible for their, uh, the premium sixty-two six. I did have them on your blue page. I asked Ramada to quote us a ten thousand dollar deductible in the twenty-five to show the difference in print. Just in case we want to look at property development increases. And you see the difference from sixty-two on the top page, you got the, they call it FPPC, which is the fifty-nine four and the fifty-seven. That's the different property development. And that's the premium. Tell the difference in a twenty-five and a twenty-five hundred and twenty-five thousand is basically five thousand dollars. And then you have the T of fifty-nine four.
I'm confused on that, on that deductible twenty-five. Tell me what we got there, can you?
All right, we're carrying a twenty-five hundred. That's what we have. I got Ramada to run us what the property quote would be if we increased our property. One is ten thousand dollars of twenty-five.
Is that saved?
That would be the print.
We're at sixty-two now, you're talking about fifty-nine.
For twenty-five thousand, so you know, one plan would lose the tire. So I just wanted you to see a ex, another option. Hopefully we'll be seeing some increases. Uh, on page three. Sixty-two would be the, would be is what we're currently carrying. Sixty-two thousand for our property print back.
All right, what did we pay last year?
Last year we paid. Last year was sixty-two thousand.
A hundred dollars?
Then sixty-six. Sixty-two, sixty-two sixty-five.
Last year was sixty-two five.
That's what I'm showing here, probably. There's the last year quote we backed, sixty-two five ninety-two.
You ain't told me about the forty dollars.
Even though they ain't. I just wanted, so we're fixed, our liability is fixed, and we need our big issue, we'll fix it, get up with that. All right, let's, uh, let's turn it over here, over your liability. All right, we're gonna go to page three, we see our general liability along with our law enforcement. Thirteen six fifty. This is our general liability. Last year. I believe in law enforcement, seventy-nine four ninety-two.
That's the two combined.
Yes. Question on that page. All right, the county liability is thirteen sixty. What was it last year? I've got it from a total. General liability is seventy.
All right, this year is forty, thirteen forty-eight, correct?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. Ryan, are you sure that's Russ?
I'm sure what I've got is our, our binding. You don't brought my last year.
You don't have to.
Don't argue. Oh, I'm not. I'm not arguing. But we want rights. I agree.
I agree.
Nothing changed.
That's why I brought it so far. Not when I live thousands, they had these two right here together last year, and if you add them together now, nearly eleven thousand dollars less. And Joey's doing an excellent job keeping people from getting hurt.
That would decrease that rate, we'd decrease that print. So we decreased our.
Yeah, because you got many employees.
Yeah, last year we had a big increase in our employees.
And that would be another question, how did that happen?
They included part-time, that's.
Part-time.
Okay, so that's the difference in how we're rating it now.
Your liability, don't they need to be on there?
They're covered.
If they're covered, they ask for full time, that's you.
Got you.
Well, I say, like, that's kind of fact. You got part-time, yeah, if it was only worth part-time, then you gotta be twenty-some hours to get the insurance, everybody's covered. I guess the reason they didn't ask for this, though, is because they don't work that full-time. Right, like, they ask for full-time. I get you. Steve, the county, uh, it's about six or seven hours, and you gotta, part-time, you gotta work there. You have any new laws, Steve? I have no idea.
Right? Let's come it down, let's keep going to next page, you're coming down, hold on.
Well. I have it up speaking to them.
Right?
I go up speaking to them, it's called public position. That's gonna be on page. What is this right here?
I eat the bowl.
Right. So he's, uh, sees that, or you know, increase.
I wasn't.
There is twenty-one five last year.
It, it increased thirteen thousand. Worked like that, it's pretty.
Well, you know, we're in a pool. It's not rated on here.
In the middle.
We did have a thirty-four, y'all just basically, you had an eighty percent loss ratio, it was kinda like, oh, I made a thirty-seven, we've seen eighty-seven and a hundred twenty-one. So, you know, we contribute to that pool, that's why it's called a pool.
Right.
So, uh.
I get you.
But that's where we are on it, there's where an increase is on public. One of the issues that's used, as we talked about it, was a nuclear claim. They should know a good bit about that, the nuclear claims, uh, putting coffee to make them drive. So, the type of, we're talking, any insurance that you have a nuclear claim. So there are very increased, uh.
All right, I'm counting the bottom line, yeah, this is where I see a total of two twenty-three six, what was our total last year?
One ninety-eight seven. You're a total of a thirteen percent. Were there auto physical damage, or comparison, were there auto physical damages? Along with their property and equipment breakdown coverage. Last year total, which was the same scenario, it was sixty-two, five ninety-two. With all the physical damages, we just looked at, it did get down on seventeen.
So it's only under twenty-four thousand, that's under thirty-nine.
Eleven thirteen percent, I think that's two. Had another one, seventeen, another twenty-one percent.
Third time, what you expect, Steve, you accept to do?
I have no idea. We did, you know, what we did, frankly, we did a value.
What we put in the, uh, budget?
What, what got us is the appraisal on the property, and they're taking it up from twenty-four million to thirty-two billion dollars, you're increasing, you're showing on the pages, you're increasing with eight billion dollars in value.
Well, I seen, I seen.
Value increases was getting the premium, but.
Well, I seen that, that didn't work.
Y'all know what bill you're calling this thing, so you put changes in there, or the budget, I'm sure, I put something in, but I got those grand.
I don't, we don't ever do that much, it's not a much, you know, we're moving around, and, 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 you put. State, we're, we're insured sixty-five, uh, seventy-nine county, so we're available, we don't do, oh, we don't do the, massive will not go to the coach, and insure the county down there, so we have seventy-nine available, and we're insured sixty-five. And of course, charge you seven on that book.
Go, go back for me on the, on the property. The property itself is sixty-two, sixty-one five. It's on the first page there, on page two, on page two.
Yes, sixty-six.
Okay, and then we're adding auto?
Yes, and that's where that, last year's total.
Where, where is that?
It'll be on page.
Is that the thirty?
That's our liability, auto physical damage is twenty-seven. It is on page four, the very bottom.
That bold print there, twenty-seven, eight, two, four.
That's twenty-seven, and that's where the, and that goes along with.
We had the sixty, sixty-two plus the twenty-seven.
Right.
That gets to the ninety, forty?
Yes.
Okay, now the equipment breakdown in that also?
It's included, it's included, on that binding page, which is the next page, on page six, where they've included that package, they don't break it down, other than a breakdown, equipment breakdown is included, along with property and auto physical damage. So if we go to the page six, you see where our biggest increase is on our public position. It's a total of thirteen, on the total package. The property basically took, posted a forty percent increase, because of the increase of that, and that has gone through our appraisal that they bring out. Three weeks ago, Steve, and we were still working on getting the appraisals to where they needed to be, they're not, trying to be compared to even for today, oh, this month, if you count, well, she's got sixty-five county, this month, but she's working. In the February, we were working on, and you said, and we started in October. Well, you know, we, we try, try to stay on some issues, we didn't look at it last year, me and Mr. Charles two years ago, we talked about our, what we call our standard markets. And all of our standard markets are going two to three percent deductible, for a plane, it would be a three percent, or two percent of the value of a one billion, three million dollar building would have three percent associated with that thousand dollars of deductible. Luckily, we haven't had any, a lot of property. And then the multi-function, the pension, it's a security issue to require.
Y'all do questions, I make the most, except, uh, you vote for massive. Uh, insurance. Any other discussion?
Well, I was just gonna say, do we wanna look at the deductible, it doesn't make sense to me, if they go to hire the duck, we only save them three thousand dollars.
And actually, leaving on the plane.
And that's not, I just wanted y'all to see the options that they could be, and I asked for that, okay? I'll just say that.
Well, that's.
Is that, you, you won't believe it, same.
Well, I thought, no more savings than you're gonna get.
Okay, you just showed that, it's, it's. I just wanted you to see an option to see, because, you know, Mr. Charles has had some experience, and he's asked me a couple times for questions, so I wanted you to see all options available that we have.
Well, I heard from one of them.
That's right. Well, you get more and more and more, uh, before he got here.
I'm opposite of the history.
Well, you know, I put, I'm, I'm honoring, I trust you're putting the paper over here, so I try to do the best I can.
No, I don't mind, I'm fine with it, I just, y'all does know, feel right. No, I'm called to vote, I asked for the question, and I'm, we still discuss it, so, all in vain.
All right, good, let's go. I do, one thing I'd like to encourage is, I have participated myself in the law enforcement, legal seminar that they're having, uh, this one actually being eight, point seven, and global. I've been, sat in, it's very good.
Y'all, you sent it somewhere?
Represented it together.
No, there's that.
I said it to be late.
Let me present you this.
I've sat in it, I would encourage the attorneys that will be representing, so he gets personally directed, here, put yourself, this, we're gonna really get the, that's exactly what he told us, I was sitting next to him, I would encourage. And then we go again, they go through a lot of things.
What date did you get?
I didn't see it. It's a, it's on the blue sheet at the bottom.
April twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So, easy drive, one day, or come back, maybe, but I would very well encourage, I, I was well informed when I went.
Probably, probably help our insurance job, uh, go pricing in the future, have a couple people attend.
Any questions? I've been thanked up so much, we are, and still, me and Steve are his assistants, so he's just been, uh, Steve this year's been quite a long day, we got it done.
We're probably just gonna let you and Charles sit and do this next year.
Ah, he'll break me over the cold. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, go ahead, we got here, Scott Kelly. Down the list.
How y'all doing this long?
Good, I'm sleeping.
We're gonna talk about spending some money, we're gonna talk about savings some money.
Anyway, I called up, a couple weeks ago, and they said, I put him over the phone, and I was asking if y'all are down, maybe be interested in our services, he said, no. He said, come talk to us, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't make him, I'm off six days, so, I'm here today, so I thank y'all for taking a little time to visit with me. What I'm here to talk to y'all about is your class one, class two rubber site, right now, currently in our state, D Q, you can connect two planes, and store your limbs, and have somebody come in and ship all of them off-site, which is very expensive. All you can do, which y'all are doing currently, all the dirt covered up, like, well, uh, we, we've come up with a, or given a third option, basically what our option is, is you can stockpile, uh, your limbs on an acre and a half, or nine months, whichever comes first. However, even truck drivers can drive to come in and dump, and then we have a process that we come in, that we recycle the limbs, we got a machine that puts them in there, it's a contained unit, it's called an air curtain burner. This is an environmentally safe, friendly, weight our atmosphere, that controls the smoke, doesn't really allow a lot of smoke to go into the atmosphere, it's got a fan system that basically just turns it, turns it over and over again, in the heat process. Well, what this is here to, to help y'all with is to give you another option, uh, with the state, you know, you can continue burying your limbs if you want to, but the main goal, we set out to try to save landfill space. You know, how long is your landfill gonna last, you know, you keep having storms, you keep having lanes, and you put the rubbish in there, how long is it gonna last? Well, our option is we have to save that space, and basically, what is a little bit about the machine is on the first page, but the other pages are on there, that, that our engineer firm, M C and E, I have Brandon, that has been working with us, and, you know, the D Q. Basically, the D Q being the state agency, they came to call y'all to solicit us, and tell y'all, hey, here's a new way, y'all may go with him, it's cheaper, it's better, we want to go this way, they can't really do that. So basically, what they do is give me a list of all the class one, class two rubber sites in the state, and then it's up to me to go and contact y'all and see, what are y'all doing now, what's it costing y'all now? And go that way, then, if y'all wanna know more about us, then y'all can call in the D Qs and inquire about our process and what we're doing, and they can educate y'all on that.
I can't do anything about it.
But basically, what I typed is, is what you have to do, is you have to do an amendment to silent waste management, and it would be just a simple cover letter, asking for maybe to accept that process, and then I've attached a class one and a class two example, because based on D Q, y'all have both. But, uh, and then the, the question y'all are coming to next, what's it cost? We, we charge seven dollars a cubic yard, is what we charge for our service. And basically, to give you just an idea, just that we just started operations in November, and our first county that we worked for was Lincoln County, and we worked for the city of Starkville, at their class one rubber site. They had a little over twelve thousand cubic yards that they had on about an acre, that we reduced for them, and then, based on what we're gonna provide for them this year, we're gonna save them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to what they've been, process they've been doing, which it did, and have to haul it off. And then we're currently, uh, in Simpson County right now, working with the county and with the city, and they're doing like y'all, they're covering, covering, like y'all's process. They had a little over five, right at five thousand cubic yards that we performed for them, well, at thirty-five thousand dollars for our fee, they, and that's the problem, going around and talking to some of y'all, people don't really know their numbers, what's it costing us? What's it costing us to haul dirt, labor to put it there, keep it there, well, they, they figured it pretty quick, that they figured that what they had there was gonna take over two hundred truckloads of dirt to cut, you know, 'cause you got two weeks to do it, you gotta put two foot of dirt over the top of it. Well, they figured that was gonna cost them between seventy and eighty thousand dollars. So just, already, just from the numbers standpoint, it's, it's a no-brainer to, to a lot of them, once we start pitching this. We went last week and talked with the city of Starkville, to give you an idea, with them, their rubber site has gotten shut down, because they've exceeded their boundaries and they're over hot. Well, what we can do with our process, we can get their, their site opened back up, 'cause what they're doing now is having to haul to another county, to their rubber site, and they're having to pay a tipping fee and all of that, plus time, trucks are traveling. What we can do is, with our process, D Q's gonna allow to go back in on what's been buried, and we can store limbs on top, so they can go right back on top of what they buried, and put limbs on top. The only problem is, D Q won't allow us to set our machine up on top of buried rubbish, they're just kinda maybe scared with the heat process, we might catch the underground stuff on fire, you know, we would, don't wanna do that, so it would have to be on your side, somebody would have to know the history of it enough to know if there's anything buried. If not, we have to take a hoe and, you know, basically dig down, making sure there's nothing buried over there to set up our equipment. But just, just a little bit, that's, you know, a little bit about our company and our service.
How much ash, so y'all, 'cause it'll have to.
Yes, we, we.
Take through the ash?
Sir.
Oh, yeah, so y'all take through the ash when you get?
Yes, sir, we take, we haul it off site with us, and that's, that's an additional fee of twenty cents a ton mile, for a forty mile minimum. But just for an example, on Brookhaven, we're right at a thirteen, between, well, twelve thousand five hundred cubic yards, there was only two loads of ash. So we reduce it ninety-five percent with our process, whereas if you've got chips, you got a thousand tons of chips there, I mean, a thousand tons of wood, if you got a thousand tons of chips, you gotta haul us forty-five loads, you gotta get hauled off, that's why it's so expensive. Whereas with ours, you know, it's just two truckloads of ash, you know, to have to haul off, just like with Simpson County, it's just gonna be warm, and.
Now, how do you scale that, do you scale that after you output it in your container?
No, sure, what, what we did on the first two previous jobs is, we, we hired a third-party engineer to come out and estimate the piles, and basically, it's just, we, we've done some stuff, we're just doing it the old-fashioned way, length, width, time, height, get square foot, divide that by twenty-seven. And then we tried to play around with letting some people come and do some drone flying, seeing to calculate it that way, well, so far, everything we, we've come out on the drone is not, not accurate, it can't read. It can read the top of the pile, but it can't read the dirt, and if you've got a few trees around the site, it wants to read the height off the trees, but we're playing with it, you know, 'cause they, that's how some people wanted it.
Well, you tell them something, they have two, they got like voids and stuff.
I'll say compressed through that.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
You know, it's where y'all do it, if I tell them, like, you don't do that thing.
Yes, yes, and then, just like, just like when we completed, completed some of the work, during the time that we were there, they had hauled in some more, well, instead of calling the engineer to come and paying that fee and getting them to come back, basically, they had a twenty, twenty-yard truck, and we just said, you know, there's no way to water by, by twenty, twenty-yard truck, so what I said is, is, would y'all be comfortable on fifteen yards? So basically, I went out there and they had twenty-one, you know, you can count them, twenty-one truck, truckloads and fifteen cubic yards times our rate, and that's how we added on some more work before we completed.
Don't, don't we weigh everything in?
Yes. So we would have it, I wouldn't leave it out here.
Converge tons and yards real quick.
Yes, sir, it just, it all, it, all that kinda just depends on the material.
Yeah.
You know, you can use a, a conversion factor as, as low as two, to up to a conversion factor as high as a little over three.
Grainer is more than gonna wash it, so you'd have to find, if somebody's cutting, hauling today, it's gonna be different. And if you cut, somebody cut it two weeks ago, and then drove it out there.
Yes, sir. Here, here's how that can work sometimes. If y'all, if y'all are gonna pay me on weight, I'm gonna come out ahead on that. Because if you're storing it for nine, you know, three months, six months before I get there, it's gonna dry.
That's right.
Versus.
The way you're doing it's about your own fairway.
Yes, sir.
What is, you said, how much per cubic yard, seven cubic yards?
Seven dollars a cubic yard, that's, that's our service, yes, sir.
Seven dollars a cubic yard.
Plus, plus all in, yeah. Twenty cents a ton to remove it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this, this other thing that we gotta do, you would be under the umbrella of our, uh, DEQ garbage plan. When you, so something happened that was still, um, um, some kind of accident or something happens, then it still fall back on us, it wouldn't fall back on y'all.
Run that by me again, that would be.
Oh, you're gonna be under the, the, our DEQ plan. We're gonna have to make amendment to it, put that.
Yeah, 'cause maybe you, that is something that you asked me on the phone, not one to worry of, so asking that question.
So you, I don't know, you, your machine blowed up out there on some, some kind of accident or mishap that would happen to you out there or your business, then it would fall back under our umbrella, and which would make us really liable.
No, sir, no, sir, not really, not on our contract, our contract, I provide my own insurance and, you know, I'm self, I'm a, uh, sub-con- subcontractor or whatever, I'm not.
I understand that, but he's still gonna, it's still be the same thing, if he's under our, I don't see how, if he didn't, he wouldn't have to be under our umbrella.
Oh, you're talking about forward to DEQ umbrella?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll have to be added, yeah, I see what you're saying now, I thought you were talking about.
No, it'd be, yeah, he'd be under our umbrella if he could some insurance thing, if he suffered, he wouldn't, what, what's the use of going through us? What's on our plan, I wanna go our plan.
He's gotta go through our plan, get on our side, 'cause it's.
No, y'all, no, y'all have to amend your plan.
Yeah.
You're, you're amending me into your plan, like, our option is the third option, it gives you another way.
I'm not, I'm just trying to, in my head, I'm not trying to confuse it.
Subcontractors.
We've had this on, the exhale thing come up.
Yeah, and it, and it's something else that I didn't add, that we talked a little bit about, that with us being a mobile service in our state, let's just say inside the county. Y'all have a tornado hit X, Y, Z area, well, that, let's just say the trucking, if y'all bringing that material back to the rubbish site is not feasible, we can actually, we're being a minimum approved to go to that site right there and take care of it.
Probably were you two years ago.
Well, well, maybe we're, we're preventing, we're, we're trying to get it now, but then another thing also that we can provide.
It has to be approved by the DEQ site.
Sir?
The site has to be.
Well, it has to be a disaster, you know, considered.
Well, no, I'm talking about that, but, you know, we got into this, we were trying to burn and put the sites, they had to go pick the sites. We had to dig pits and get fans and burners.
But not, not with our, not with our, not with our process, let's just say you got a landowner.
Let's just say you got a landowner adjacent that's got a field that's willing to let y'all stockpile it there.
And you could go there without any DEQ question.
Yes, if it's a disaster.
They would ask questions, but he's saying they would approve.
Yes, sir, see, they, they're very familiar with our process, they, they, they like it, but like I said, they can't solicit it.
They needed you bad.
Well, here, here's another question that I can answer. Let's just say each of you in your district want a spot for limbs. Well, DEQ says if a county wants you for a separate site, well, then they've got a process that, that Trent Jones has solid waste, is willing to work with y'all within that, to give y'all just a storage site that I can come to and take care of the limbs. Then you don't have to get permitted like a Class One or Class Two, no public notification, none of that stuff, it's just a temporary storage site, if that makes sense, so.
Y'all, we do have a tornado and we've got a hundred loads of limbs that we're trying to haul, instead of hauling it to twenty miles to the landfill, we can store them on this site, you can come, you can take.
Yes, sir, they're, and they're willing to work with y'all, if y'all would give them a location, because basically, to run this machine, I just can't have anything within a hundred and fifty feet of it. And basically, when it's, you know, that's up to a twenty mile an hour wind, usually so far, I hadn't really operated it yet over twenty mile an hour wind.
Hundred and fifty feet.
Yes, sir. No, sir.
That's a lot.
No, sir, basically, so wherever y'all are storing your limbs, if I come into the site, and basically, it was also a site map that we would have to send in, DEQ along with this amendment that I've given y'all example of, to show them on the site where we locate our equipment, you know, where we put it. But you just can't store your limbs within a hundred, I'm kinda really at two hundred feet.
So you gonna have a saw involved as well as a tractor?
No, sir, all I, basically, I have, I, I got a little video, if, if y'all wanna kinda watch it. The problem is, is, uh.
You're thinking about long stuff, how you gonna fit?
Yes, well, anything that goes in your truck, I go on my machine. It gonna, anything that'll fit in that, your trucks, you know, it'll, it'll fit in the machine.
I can't see it down here.
But basically, we come, uh, we come with a, I just come with a bulldozer and a front-end motor, and a water trailer. And the water trailer's really there for fire present, fire prevention, but it's also the way we use, when we break out the ash every day or every other day, we have to kinda, the DEQ wants us to wet that and cool it, because it keeps some of the dust down, so.
So DEQ has made a lot of changes, 'cause I remember back in the day when I was dealing with Trent, years ago, you could, at every site that you stored, it had to be approved through DEQ, and it's, you select, you just select every that they would let you put it, is that common science?
This is, this is something that they're working with us on, this was a two-year process of us showing them a different way how to do things, and they accepting this and, and doing it. But it, this is, this is gonna catch on pretty quick, 'cause we can save a lot of money. Sir?
They're doing it because of the smoke, more than anything.
Well, it just, the open burn is just, it's just not good, you know, open burn, it's just no control of the smoke. It's, it's, it's amazing to come and watch this thing work, how, how little smoke it does put off. But also, Mississippi State, what we found out with our research, buried limbs underground is not a good thing. It goes through a heat process, goes to a decompose, and actually puts off methane gas back into the atmosphere. And then plus, you can't ever use that land for, you know, can't ever use that land for nothing else. Plus, and then as far as our ash, that is actually registered with the state, and we've got a beneficial use for it as a soil medium. So I'm kinda guinea pig, or our family's guinea pig right now, taking it back, putting on some cattle pasture land. And we're seeing how it'll work, because it's not exactly like wine, but it's kinda the same, you can have a higher, you have a greater pH. You know, we're kinda working on that.
It's just like burning fresh piles in your pasture, once it's, burning all the, that grass do really good there.
Yes, sir.
What we need to do, I think here, Scott, is, is, uh, for us to call the DEQ and tell them, make sure we, and, and we, I trust you, whatever line you say, but make sure we're not, we can do that, but I, I know, we've had trouble before trying to add on to the plan and different things, like Kenny said before, DEQ was real sketchy about what they did, and I'm sure you've done all the steps and all the work and everything to do it, but I think we better confirm it before, you know, we, we can.
Absolutely, you're, you're right, we have, it, I want you to be at peace.
Yeah, well.
You find out, research it and do it.
Yeah, well, I, I think we'd have to, the board, we think we'd have to, to look at it. Yeah, 'cause I think that'd be phone calls and whatever, but.
But Trent Jones, he's the head of solid waste.
Oh, DEQ man.
Yes, sir.
Trent Jones, okay.
Been after a hundred years.
Oh, you know him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, he recently.
He might be the man needed, I'm.
Used to watch Star Wars when he was in Africa.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark Williams used to be the head, but last year he retired, and this guy, he's taken over, he's kind of the head, head chabani there now.
Well, that, listen, all this sounds good, 'cause we all, at some time or other could have used you at different times, but we still got the landfill. And the way I'm understanding it, you can set up at our landfill, the limbs is all out there, as long as we got designated acre or so that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, 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 I understand the concept and whatever.
And then also, to see Brookhaven, check with the mayor there, the city of E mayor, to call and ask them about how they were satisfied with our work. And tell y'all once we're going to next, that, that don't matter, it matters before we begin.
Okay.
Amazing.
Sure.
Did you say we needed an acre and a half, or is that the max you could use?
No, sir, no, sir, oh, uh, oh, oh, basically, we, we kinda developed some guidelines with DEQ, because basically, they don't want y'all storing limbs for two or three years and then calling us, you know, basically, we kinda come up with an acre and a half is a guideline, they come up with, either you fill up the acre and a half first, or nine months. Basically, they don't want you storing limbs where it's growing grass between it and animals or housing.
We probably need to be contracted with you before we even start storing it like that, without covering it up, is what I'm getting at.
No, sir, no, sir, the way we did is a little ones, whenever, whenever you send in that, that application right there, basically, what we do is, if y'all want our services and we'll get everything prepared, instead of having blanks, we'll, we'll have all the stuff, you permit your site numbers, all that filled in, we'll bring three copies. And then one copy, whoever, is y'all, y'all know, y'all didn't figure out who's gotta sign, or who needs to sign, can sign. And then one copy's for us, and then one copy's for DEQ. And we found this out the hard way, is we, we take one copy, we hand deliver it to DEQ, and then they stamp it that day. Because we may go, we may go one in and it's out there for over thirty-something days before it ever got to somebody's desk.
So once that process is done, then we can go store it, once they say.
You can quit burying.
We'd go store the nails.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, as soon as you send in that, that paperwork, and, and it took them about, it took them about a month to get it back and approve it and all that, but they, they're real familiar with it. You send that in and it's stamped, you can just, you can start storing, you gotta, you gotta bury them all.
I've got a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
All right, do you require a minimum to go on site?
That's something that we're working on, because some people, I'm just gonna be a once-a-year service, which be, I would think y'all would be a once-a-year service.
I had a tornado the other day that come through my beach that didn't affect these other guys. And, you know, Lord, if I could have you sitting out there pretty close and burning that stuff instead of hauling it back for us, you know, I'd save a lot of time.
Yes, sir.
But we would have to have you, we would have to have this on record with DEQ before you could do.
It, it would have to be declared, declared a disaster area, and then y'all would have to show them where y'all wanna store it, you know, where y'all wanna house.
We have a spot there.
Yes, sir.
Can it still sit there, the nine months?
If it's gotta be declared a disaster, it'll be the key.
That's a different question on the nine months, say the nine months.
Like we did, so yeah, I see where you're, you're.
But now, but now, I wanna piggyback on that, say he had twenty box truckloads of wood, but it didn't declare a disaster, he could still, if you're part of our DEQ, you could still, he could still request y'all to come and burn it at the same rate, right? He would just have to pay you.
Yes, sir.
Would it be stored for the store somewhere, or would that be as where you can land a little?
Now, that's, that's gonna be a DEQ question. This, this, it's really funny, you know, you can, you can have their trees fall all out there in that yard, and as long as those trees don't leave that piece of property, you can burn it, do whatever you want to it. But when you pick those trees up.
That's right.
Somewhere else, it becomes solid waste. And so this has been really horrible me to talk with him, 'cause this is my background, I'm, I'm a graduate of Richter Forester, Mississippi State, and I've been timber logging business for twenty-five years. And y'all probably wondering maybe how we got our name, with during COVID, basically, bill quotas and prices, we, we had found something else to do. You know, 'cause I can't feed my family, you know, we didn't grow a hundred loads a week, and they tell them, you haul dirt. You know, and no matter where I work, yes, everybody, you know, got just, you got so tough. Basically, I had to renew our mine, and that's how we got renewable, and then as we're going in and talking to people, you know, seeing that this would even maybe be an idea that would work, and I said, well, you got a solution to the problem. So that's how we, you know, come up with our name. But, uh, the, the guideline of kinda when you ask about a minimum, we kinda did the math, if you windrove correctly, basically, they want three, three rows, and then they want you to skip about thirty-five foot to start your next truckload. And that's just maybe if a fire on site got in place, it got some kind of fire break there, but, but we kinda figured out an acre and a half would roughly be around thirteen thousand cubic yards. And, you know, we'd kinda set this out to be able to move around to counties and do stuff, you know, not, I'm not saying that is our minimum, but we kinda looked at a, you know, roughly it could be ten thousand cubic yards there, that somebody stored for, you know, almost nine months. Justifies, oh, no, you know, we just went to Simpson County and did forty-nine hundred cubic yards, you know, we just hadn't. But what he was saying, just to come and do twenty truckloads, we'd have to look at the numbers on that.
Well, twenty truckloads, we could probably do something about that.
Lightning might wanna hit right there for, you know, God let lightning hit.
This is a lot.
We, we appreciate you coming back.
We don't know what you're.
Yeah, I think we've been.
Yes, sir. Yeah, y'all talking about any way we could help y'all?
It sounds good.
We're just trying to get the word out to different ones, it's, but basically, right now, the way I'm permitted, I can only go to a permitted, already existing site for, like we're talking about a disaster.
There you have a ice storm over a windstorm, we could give you a business, eh?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, well, we, we gonna do a little research of our own and, and contact DEQ. And it sounds good, and we, I feel like we probably, you'll probably hear in front of us.
Well, thank y'all, appreciate y'all's time.
Appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir.
Have a good rest of the week.
A wrap, thank you.
Yeah, I'll need a, the AAA man, are you waiting around for us to make the decision, or do you need to see us or something?
Uh, yes, sir, I was, uh, I had to step out with some business calls to come in, but, uh, I was waiting for her to come through with the insurance and whatever. Uh, I mean, on our deal, y'all have, in other companies, y'all have them options, but, uh, at trucks, if y'all's trucks get hung up, y'all always have that option to call me, and my trucks, pretty much, well, all I did was divided my total cost, what it cost me to haul that pair of driver in a truck. Uh, I've got one tandem and two trucks that haul about twenty-five tons, so I can, that's fifty tons on them two trucks, and then that one tandem's fifteen tons. I can make one round, I haul sixty-five tons at one time, um, from the plant. And then I can lease trucks from that, but that cost is a per ton, and so y'all would have the option, if y'all's trucks aren't hung up, and y'all wanted to throw that, I'm only charging per ton haul, is how that price was figured in. So if y'all said, hey, I wanna put my trucks in there to bring that price down on hauling, but I still wanna use your trucks to make this stuff happen, um, then we can just, we can do that and keep staying aligned up.
We did, we, I, I didn't wanna, we'll hang on, you know, call you to have to hang around all day, but.
Right.
We'll wait till she does that, but, uh, and makes a call, when she come back in, well, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to make a decision, we will then. But, uh, uh, until then, we're gonna go on, y'all need a break for a minute, or you know, wanna move on, thank you.
So y'all just, y'all just give me a call, let me know whatever, if y'all need me or, you know.
Thank you for coming back.
Any way we can help y'all, we're here, man, so.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good seat.
Y'all wanna go ahead, move on, are we like good? All right. Can you, you need to see us?
Good, good.
Say that?
I said, y'all need to be, I was wrong, too.
This is resolution on that lease termination for.
Oh, okay, yeah, you need to make that motion on this?
So moved, say.
Resolution to terminating lease.
When's this coming off?
Interest, burn, family property, shore this off, it says all right here if you want.
Okay.
Copy.
I'm giving to you.
All right, we're going on that.
My question is, is this like today, I'm thinking about insurance, this will be maintaining insurance until we accept.
Whenever we were reported. So I mean. I wish, what I was doing here, have you talked to Rodney about the certain factor?
I did not.
I apologize.
But I mean, this, this done dealing with, I think, you're gonna have to do it, so. You made the motion, need a second? Got it, I'll let you back in. All right, I have no sign right here. Right, first rated.
Yeah.
What's all that? I got any kind of mess.
So are you saying you don't wanna record it here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna call Rodney and see.
Okay.
You knew I was gonna ask, thank you, buddy. Yeah, I guess we, we don't think anything like that.
I just wanna make sure.
All right.
Y'all have a good one.
Jody, you waiting to see us? We gonna get all these people need to go to work, go to work.
You got that right. Yeah, I am, I'm not gonna do anything.
His time means nothing to us.
Man, to see y'all need anything.
I think we in pretty good shape, you got your car mounted, tools are going down there.
Yeah, it's wild. I mean, now that y'all used to.
I had.
Zero, none?
Probably won't be none, cause I mean, it's good to have.
Zero, regardless, from the zero we need.
Twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, I think, say, make that, will you?
Oh, they gonna do the trees.
Have motorized side, easy up there.
We don't do motorized.
How? What about our man pickup man?
Oh, he's white enough for a big. He had the flu and then COVID, now she got a rub late.
Yeah.
He sent it out yesterday, on text, well, he's had a run, month, bad, terrible.
That's good.
Uh, gonna let y'all know what we got going on grant wise, we, we're gonna apply for the Homeland Security Grant again. Uh, there's some extra COVID money left over, while they don't put it back in the bank, I don't know, but we're gonna apply for that also. And hopefully, we're looking at, hopefully, getting some money from the state also, so, when all that comes around, I'll let you know, like, we haven't been approved for anything yet, but we're applying broadly.
Okay.
That's where we.
We'll always fly up them grants, man.
That's a, free grant, free, hundred percent grant.
Like, well, now it's got.
Free money. We always look at free money, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, buddy.
Maybe you can get us a heat and a cooling system with that grant.
Yeah, we have a cooling, we usually got cooling, and it's cold. We usually got warm, so. Fifty-fifty.
All right.
Come on, God.
Oh, okay. Oh. How many times y'all been asked, hey, how y'all doing today? Everybody sits up here.
I don't think any of you care.
No, no. I'll tell you what, y'all sent me off, you said, on a goose chase, I ain't never in my life, I didn't have a clue where I was at. When I left here last meeting, go out here, take a ride, go this way, go out and get that road.
That's a big old trip.
By the time I got out of Philadelphia, I said, where am I?
You didn't listen.
Yeah, this is our engineer here.
He's not very much drum up business, don't even lie to y'all.
I did find the road, that is amazing. And the ones that, uh, Dewan had set up for that recie. That's amazing. Uh, got Mr. Bussy out marking them again, we got our fingers crossed that these guys are gonna show up. He says they're probably still a couple of weeks out, and the weather got them this week.
There you're talking, to Holland War.
Yeah.
Pretty low.
Yeah, new to all the levels, so that's still where they're at, um. We're getting closer, we had Butch down here Tuesday with us, we looked at Big Fellow again. Got it back for the next stage, I think that one's gonna happen. Buckley was the next one. Yeah, I just call it Big Fellow. I'm learning. I'm in a new world over here. I've got the one on Buckley, it's gonna be the next, it's LSVP. We got a little over a million dollars in that fund, so both of those projects should go state aid, it's about eight hundred thousand. So I know we'll at least get them two this year. The next focus is the ERBR, and that's really what I wanna talk to y'all about. Including the roads that we all have got to sit down, I brought my calendar, and we can sit here and pick what day y'all wanna go ride, and we'll go ahead and put it on the calendar and make us a date. A lot of times with me, it's better if you say, I need you tomorrow. If you give me too much of a window, I got a lot of folks wanting time, and I'll be like, oh, I forgot about that.
What time tomorrow?
Hmm, tomorrow morning?
It'll be raining.
Rain or rain.
Oh, raining a few, it's water, it's in the water standing. See all your high shoulders. It rains, see all your high shoulders.
Yeah, is that, you're talking about.
No, ERBR.
Yeah, and, and anything you wanna look at and discuss, but we do need to spend time together. In individually, group, it doesn't matter, however y'all wanna do it.
I took care of me and you, I told Chucky David we're going forward to interstate.
From where at?
How we going forward to that interstate?
Mm-hmm, that's a long one. But it's amazing, was that, that was a state road or something, that one time?
No, they still call it, if you look on the map, it's four out of one, but it's.
Four out of one.
It's never been four out of one.
Chunky to the interstate, this, this day and time.
This is a.
Made it to the interstate.
I compiled a little list here, it's like a wish list.
I wish that had done yesterday.
That road?
That road.
If you don't win it, she might look for it to be.
Well, that's what I'm saying to y'all today, the worst thing they can do is not accept them. We're not, I mean, I'll be out just a little bit of effort, but, you know, it's, it's like going to the casino. It may pay off big, so we're okay with that.
Oh, they're a little brother, ain't they?
All right, I just listed every structure that we have that has a condition rating of four, at least. And this is the results from it, and this is countywide. Um, you see that, that, the first one, of course, we already know we're gonna do that as ERBR. Um, the Bethels programmed as a state aid project, the other two, the LSVP and the Hig Fellowship. Why I call it that, I don't know, I just got this slaying around our office now, we just holler, Hig Fellow. You're gonna know more about this than I do, I'm only going by the data. What they wanna look at is clover structures, posted structures. So that kinda narrows it down, you see the ones that are five ton, and usually if they're five ton, by the next go around, they gonna be critical findings or something on those. And I will say, we will try for roads, but the majority of the time, they don't wanna go over bridges. That's really what they want. So don't put all your eggs in one basket and say, we'll do that. And you, you know, you gotta do them by priority anyway, what's your number one egg? And that's fine, we can do it that way. As a group, y'all will tell me that and say, here's number one, I'll do it.
All right, at one time, we all tried to have projects in each beat, I mean, we kinda go around.
That's right.
And so everybody have a little, then trying to get everybody up to speed. There must not, the three must not, you must have got it.
Be one, two.
You know, and you notice I don't have anything in district?
Yeah.
Councillor and I are, are trying to work through that, we'll, it, the way y'all had it, get set up whatever company, it, it makes it easy for either one of us to do.
Or is Union Road?
That's gotta be.
That's gonna be one on you, up there for you, you have to do it.
Probably one. That's.
Right, over, not over fifteen.
Yeah, it's, it's that, it was an old state road, and I think they turned it over. Yeah.
No, that's two, two fifteen.
Yeah, it's, uh, they're rough road. And see, and that's where you see that ADT, that hill, but you gotta look at it this way, is it prior, priority for you, or for your district? Sure, it may have nine fifty, but you, it's still got twenty-nine tons. So that may not be where you wanna focus at.
Well, that's the place in being funded, Negan Bridge got this pine block, that's your bridge, isn't it, Charles?
Yes.
The, and I like, like Charles, we wanna get something.
Oh, yeah, I, I truly expect us to.
We don't have ice, man.
I, you know, I, it may only be one, we don't know, now, what I do on some of these, like those two are together, we would do that as one project, and just do both structures all at once. But what y'all may have to do.
They, 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 we're pretty, I don't know why it's on there twice.
Yep, this is the road that you're talking about, there's, it's worth it to send there's two of them. All right, what road is that?
I don't think that's all the bridge.
One thirty-two.
No, that's, that's. I really don't understand, I really said, road.
You saying this is all the bridge?
No, sir, these are all the ones that have a condition rating of four, which condition rating of four means it's bad. There's something wrong with that part of it. Five is borderline, but anything state aid looks at five or below, needing to be something done to it.
Union Road, Highway fifteen, even what the bridge, you mentioned.
Lights on there twice.
I've got two of them shown, all the data's exactly the same, I bet it's just a different question. I've got two bridges on my map.
Okay, remember, it used to be a little bridge, there's three, right here, there's a little bridge here, and a little bridge there. Yeah, but this, this one, this one is gone, this, it used to go over train track.
That's right.
This hill now.
It's been years ago, it's not a bridge.
This is on a bridge down there, this one thirty-two.
They sure were inspecting them.
Well, I guess, right there, right there.
I bet it's eight for that.
It better not rot.
Ain't even that.
You ain't got a thing on your phone to do a parallel hay.
Yeah, I'm trying to, man.
How you today?
Don't worry about you.
That's right. Cause I hauled the clay gravel on there for.
And then four fifteen versus. He's right here, yeah, there he is. Is any of them chunky creek?
It says white.
The only thing that worries me on this one, with the houses out there.
Wait, look, I noticed state, one of them's chunky creek, that's probably where it's meant to be.
One of those should say chunky creek, one should say white chunky creek, that's where the confusion is.
You look, there ain't no one bridge, that one's right there.
Where chunky?
The only, you, right there, should be right there.
All right, yeah, there's one right there.
That's not the one.
Let's see. There's the other one right there. That's what I'm saying, this one should have been chunky and not brim.
He's showing, he's showing that right there, the mayor, ex-mayor's shop, where a little branch comes in under there, is that a bridge? I thought that was a. I don't know what bridge.
Right there, that little city, just to see it.
All right, that's a bridge. I went down to, yeah, there's two bridges there, I went down to.
Yep, that's a bridge.
One of them's a branch, and one should be chunky itself, that was my mistake on this one. So we are the structure. No, we don't do cover.
We don't do box cover. They're rather covered, box cover.
Thought I had one.
You know, this pine ridge road, no, is that you, Charles?
Pine ridges, man.
That's what I thought.
I just did more of the list.
Plus the valley.
What district is in telling you the new bridge is you, I think, would be.
Yeah, that's. You know, they.
You want to update for y'all?
Yeah.
I don't know what they, uh, they don't steel pilings, concrete slabs, cheaply piled, so.
Which, which structure did that, you're saying?
Bridge number sixty-three. So yes, I'm not understanding why that one's even posted.
Sixty-three.
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley.
Thirty-three, yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's got a four.
But it owes five tons.
On that Pleasant Valley, and they're all hit four, which, that's not good.
You're saying.
No, it's mine, it's, the bridge, I mean, that particular bridge, the, the line may, I tell you what, I tell you what happened on it.
No, no, he's, he's talking about the ratings, Charles, he's not talking about the beat.
No, no, yeah, nobody, I don't.
All right, we. They're conditioned. That's what I said, they just had to re-throw it, got to keep the pile on it.
Did they not do a inspection on it?
That's a brand new, brand new pile, no, that bridge don't make good as it has.
Same way with Dry Creek on Big Barn, see.
How long ago was that, over ten years?
Yeah, but it's still piled.
I get that.
Yeah, something, something wrong with it.
Yeah.
Cause they all got four on them. You know, it works, eight in dam, the lower the number, the worse the bridge. Now, if repairs were made, and they didn't do a re-inspection, or we hadn't met that new cycle, then that could be an issue. But you only got, you know, fifty cars a day ordered the inspection, right?
Yes, so, you know, and I, um, there's some other road, bridges on the Prospect Seater Lane Road, or us, we, I'm looking to hear if anybody calls and say, it's probably empty, and it's on state route. Maybe they've been missed. Get me by.
Conversely, I want you, me to look at bridge number twenty-seven, the Lawrence Hazel Bridge. It's, it's on wood piles.
Why would it even be on this key? It's a saddle.
It's, uh, seven and six, now, unless, did you say it was a wood pile? That's why, just because it's wood piled, they're not gonna give you a high rating, and that's why it's only forty-six thirty-eight.
Well, you don't think, I mean, we're gonna try to get that road, but we don't get that, I wanna put that one bridge, that old Hig Little Rock Road, went over the Chunky Canal, it's posted by fifteen tons.
That's right.
That's the only bridge I got, just getting it posted on the rest of them, wherever a lot of truckers drag over on my record.
That's right. So we're gonna do Chunky Duffy. From.
Highway four ninety.
Four ninety-four.
Interstate four.
You got that map down there?
Yes, sir.
We're on Prospect Seater Lane Road. It's gonna be, uh, four ninety-two.
I'll show it, Charles, thank you, four ninety-two, around the corner right there.
Four ninety-nine, that's the way. Four ninety-two, you'll get.
Turns out, come out again.
Prospect Cut Off?
It's gonna be right there, something to see.
Right, I know it, it's a little smaller. There's a Prospect Cut Off for.
Prospect, so. No, that's just Prospect, Prospect Seater Lane. But that's it, ain't it, Charles, they just call it Prospect, don't you?
Runs north and south, across from, across four ninety-two.
Across four ninety-two, it comes from four ninety-two, it just makes a loop at Prospect Church.
There's a Prospect Cut Off for us out there, that's what we see.
No, it's gonna be this loop right here. Now, that's a south, great.
See this little, little small route right here, Prospect Cut Off Room? You're gonna probably go over something. No, he just.
May not be finding anyone. That little loop right there, Joe.
You got any Prospect Cut Off room? Here's four ninety-two driving.
Seater Lane Road.
Got you.
Come here, four ninety-two down here.
You're gonna be short.
And then you made a line.
State aid, you got the scam. State aid has a bridge on somewhere, but then we're gonna check rabbits from that one, there's a going forward two of them.
One fourteen.
One of them is a box. One of them is about six foot.
Yeah, there's Prospect Seater Lane right there.
Ten, fifteen, sixteen, yeah, that's. From school bus.
I don't, I can't believe it, it must have. It it definitely.
Yeah, I'm marking it. It's four, condition rating four on the superstructure. So when it's fifteen tons, ten tons, it if a school bus, the school bus needs fifteen tons for it. And that's what it, about sixteen really.
And we're everybody, I mean. Everybody got bridges. State aid roads. You said, definitely need to be checked out.
Go without help, it's on the state aid road. Also, um, some others, I guess. But that's that's the worst one, man, I can't understand the Stratton Road way with that low rating on it.
Now, Stratton, yeah.
It it's not focused, okay, the reason it is, the only thing to get on here is five on the superstructure, I don't know what that's for. But it's not focused.
Can't, he needs to holler us.
He was, he still can.
We might need to do that. There's basically a little loop. Yeah, I can check it.
Appreciate it. What y'all think of?
I give you my one over.
We just get, I got him right here.
I like it. It'll name my thirty minutes.
I'll go right with you. Yeah. We'll figure it out.
Okay. Did you say tomorrow?
If you want to, I'll wait till next week, we're done next week.
I got uh, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday next week, glad of it.
Do Wednesday, definitely get someone to come on the side a little bit.
Okay, alright, what time y'all wanna hit? Rock it up?
Five thirty.
Usually six guys.
Have to use lights.
You ready to do it? I usually have a six guy, but I mean, if you wanna do five thirty. It takes me about an hour and a half to get here. That'd be good.
You can stay in the local motel the night before.
Well, we could, that that'd help out. They're here here, wouldn't they?
Just holler them, they'll get you.
At the twenty-second? Yes, sir.
Don't fall for their tricks, you wanna stay at Holiday Inn, it's a bridge, so you'll be.
I need as much help as I can get. The older I get, I'm losing it.
Tell us how you doing.
No, I don't, I ain't having one bridge, I know, it ain't that thing, we didn't talk about it.
I'll call you.
Houston, take a call for that.
I got a good old retina doctor appointment Tuesday, so I'm not gonna be close to you. I'll let you drive.
Okay.
You better, or you'll mind you do nowhere. I was doing it, it had no path, if you gotta go that way, you know where to go.
Never run, go somewhere.
It does, I just kept riding. I just kept riding, I said.
Your violence, find something else.
I did, I started seeing them signs, you're wanting projects, I said, okay, and the word math there.
Just jot these names down on ERBR, coming out of Prospect Road. Indicator coming out of the road, reseals.
Not overlay.
Huh?
Not overlay. We gonna take, we gonna get all that free money we can get.
Okay, I'll take it, energy go.
Alright, what was that second?
We just got down the first night, so anything you put on.
Stratton, was the second one Strat?
No, Stratton Road's already programmed to be resealed.
What was your second one?
Uh, Connehat, Decatur Connehat Road and Prospect, Connehat Prospect Road. From Connehat to Prospect Church on four ninety-two. I got, I have to get that part out, I have it. Any part of it, other than that. Prospect Seater Lane Bridge, I'd like to ride with you.
Yeah, we'll do it.
One of y'all just, they, name of the day, I mean, I'm.
You bring y'all the time, honestly. You gonna be up there, you gonna be up there next Wednesday, you might.
We might, we might make a whole day out of it.
It's fine, that's better for me, and I ain't going from Maryback to Whiteboro, I can worry back on the lawn. They make me work, I go back to the hall. Um, been on the phone with Harry Lee a few times. He can't tell me exactly, he knows that ERB funding is going to appropriations. So that means now we just got to get that final quote, I'm expecting it to be somewhere in the summer. And I don't think they can use, if they award you a project that June, June stuff, this is different. I don't think that's gonna be a part of it, if we can get the money, we can go ahead and get your bid out, quick as possible. So I'm not, look, you know how they do that last, the whole return, but I don't think that's gonna affect us in this, this pot of money. Next year, I missed it this time, I didn't realize how much work went into it next year. I'm gonna try to do these DOT, um, ratings grants, it's to the federal government. And if we're, have a lot of poverty areas, that type thing, we can get a hundred percent grant money. It's gonna take a little bit of work, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue that as well. But we never have enough. I think y'all probably get, what, about three million, beginning of the board term?
Probably six or two.
We need probably about fifteen million if you get started. Just hang it up.
At Pine Bluff. Reseal Striking. Level Reseal Striking.
Was that, that's based on that ERBR, not just based on state aid road, right? Anywhere we. It's just, do you, can we show the need? I gotta write up, you know, it's just a grant for the industry. The trouble, getting to shopping, school, medical care, all these different things. So the more industry you got in that area, that helps.
Charles, like we ought to put Turkey Creek Road from Pine Bluff Church to the water park. Well, you'll have to put it on state aid program. Not ERB. Yeah, that would be a good idea. But Pine Bluff, what I'm talking about is state aid.
It's still in there.
That'll be, that'll be Landville Road. More to Turkey Creek with a camp or a boat. I was talking about this, man. That'll be uh.
Most of our spots are leased to most people, a lot of people have not.
It's gonna be from Midway Church Road, that's where it stops at, too.
What's the name?
Pine Bluff.
Bridges they been out there for a while, I don't. Tom, Chucking House, you know. He doesn't, putting these bridges on code, so.
Oh, uh.
Bridget, Bridget, Bridges, Bridges, whatever, he's staying out there. They're not, he stayed up there a whole time, we do it.
Yeah.
But I'd be late.
So midway Church Road to Pine Bluff Road, is what I think I heard you say. You had, no, you said Landville Road.
Well, not to say it's Landville, but.
Okay.
That's easier words than that.
Yeah, and then you mentioned what? See, everybody, every big company.
That's the same.
That's the same road.
They're talking about same road.
Y'all trying to throw some confusion always.
That's Turkey Creek from Midway Road to Bluff up by the.
Am I in Smith County, where we?
Midway Church Road.
Sure are we.
Midway Church Road.
Put a foot down, keep.
Look, I got scribbled everywhere on this paper.
Yeah, Midway Church Road. That's my Midway Church, okay, that's a custom.
Yeah, that's one that they do this year. Uh, this is Midway Church Road.
I'm gonna take a look at it. Where does the road go on by Midway Church and come out there to Turkey Creek?
That's Midway Church Road. You don't look sad, you're taking it hard on this state aid stop.
Making it hard on us. Where there's some candy.
I'm I'm focusing.
It's on the map.
I'ma look.
You gotta pour that out. Go to Turkey Creek, find Turkey Creek.
Y'all helping me, y'all, y'all were new at this job at one time.
Yeah, we're gonna have to gather, yeah, we gotta go down there.
This is all I had.
Yeah, yeah. Turkey Creek Road here.
Okay.
Midway Church Road is right here, got you. That portion of there is state.
That's you and you name.
All the way back to the cave. But from here, out to.
Airdishing this road, that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
Airdishing.
From here?
It's a dome.
From here.
Right.
Yeah. Not all the way up.
No, not at the state aid, all rich. It isn't a pretty big condition to come to that.
So we're really gonna start with your Midway Church?
Yes, and code is solid.
The way it come in at one nine at six, one come in at one six. They done.
So what you mentioned earlier about tornadoes, even things like that, this is what this really came about. You know, all the damage that we had through some different storms, floods, whatever. And that's what they mean by emergency, and roads can be tore up. And not always, the bridge took them. So if there's any data like that, I'll be calling, mail checking, got any kind of history you can give me. I just gotta learn, you know, you gotta try with them.
That one there. That's where it runs into Pine Bluff. And back this way. It's state aid, but it it.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, county road, state aid road, it doesn't matter.
Where you to the right, you had to.
And Harry Lee is trying to do some kind of new program for bridges, if you remember way back, we had a BR program. It's for half federal or three quarter federal. Now he's trying to do something through that use tax, and I don't know how it's gonna fix our local, but it'll be another program, just like SAP. And LBP, but it'll be this use tax, I don't know what he's gonna call it. And that could be beneficial for us on our state aid road, if it'll work out, and as long as they don't take away from what you're getting in use tax.
I tell you, Nick Downey's come a long way on their bridge project. Goes almost, I mean, they're always repaired, but he's almost slick, I'm I'm getting that away. And you know, you see it more in Jackie, where the water runs. Run downhill, but we, you know. The the project that they've had out there, we took advantage of, and we passed that program. And uh, believe it or not, I mean, over all, I mean, we probably above average all the way. Joe's probably a hundred percent, I'm almost, I got about two bridges up there.
I'm at that and that's how I got one bridge, I talked about a while ago.
So we, the project that he gave, that they putting out there, we we use them, we we've done that, but every time something come up, we try to put it. So. This kind of, this way of the beat is is getting shaken up, and this this part down here, of course, this, they catch all the water.
That's the way it always been there.
It's gonna be all, you know, water, and them catch up on it, but we've been, another program like that, and it's.
So you have roads, can't get across the bridge.
Exactly.
Using, rebuilding some of your existing structures is just as good or better.
Oh yeah.
And then you use your state aid money for your road, it'll get you right for it. I've got, like in Jones County, you know, they go in there and then re-drive and pile it, they'll get a guy come pick them up and drive them. Set them back down, they good to go, out of the last twenty, thirty more years, we won't be working here. So it won't matter, if you can do that. They didn't do that for a long time, you couldn't do it, that'd be a replacement, a bridge replacement.
Well, I mean, just in your own money.
Oh.
County funds, you do whatever you want to that structure.
Yeah, but you, but look at your rate, they may not rate it. Yeah. You know, you can go ahead and put sheet, put pile it, that's what the last supervisor, one supervisor, the firm I was, the dude he did, he took, he took two new bridges in. And drove the pile. And uh, but now they not. Of the fall.
It depends on.
Do you.
How it's done, and if you get us to watch it, let me drive it pile it and all that stuff. It'll make a difference, it really does.
Yeah, but see there's, again, when you do that, you have to raise some more money. And when you don't have much money in your bridge fund, you can't have, you can't have a whole lot of bills and what's.
I agree.
I make a motion, we recessed long enough to go to.
No, I'm gonna.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, I'm I'm good, I just need a touch base up there.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk next week.
Hey, listen, I I called you and didn't get a call back, so I'll, I'll, next time, will you up here right then, call me?
Will do. And I apologize if I didn't get back.
Well, I tried to get up, I said, well, I may have called the wrong number, but.
I'm on the road a lot, going in a lot of bad areas. How you doing? Alright, best you park in, we ain't got no signal, so if it can come through. But I apologize, we'll make sure.
I need a caller, a number or something, I.
I'll give you.
You got it?
I'll give you.
Let me get out your way and call. You know, we supposed to go to Flame down here a few minutes.
Flame?
Yeah. Isn't that kinda easy, like?
Good seeing you, John.
Yes, sir, y'all take care.
Good morning, men.
Good morning, good morning.
I know y'all have a previous engagement.
Yeah, we got here.
Flame, you gonna put that in the paper, I'm gonna do that one now.
So uh, what I uh, might talk to y'all about this morning is our show warning. Uh, you know, recently we've done some work down there, replaced a heating air system in the conference room, all is well on that, working properly. Uh, we took um, um. We got our inmates to come down there. And do some wall scraping in that room and painting. And all of that is holding and looking good. Took advantage of that free labor on that. Uh, and I still got some more things pertaining to that project that I wanna do as far as insulated bulk of ceiling, which has never been done. But uh, I'll I'll get that done soon, there'll be some help from those guys. But also, from there, you know, this building's been sitting there a long time, hadn't been maintained, and I understand it's not a moneymaker, and but we. Couldn't get there one day. It does have some, some uh, potential there. So with that being said, it has been brought to my attention that, hey, once we just got some prices on some things to see. What it's gonna take to move in that direction. As far as upgrading some lighting, getting some more painting done, uh, which is out of the hands of people like me and the inmates, because of the taste of them. Different equipment stuff to do it. So I obliged that person, and I've gotten some indications of what it might cost, I know y'all maybe. I know this wasn't on y'all's brain to talk about this this morning, but uh. If we might could persuade y'all to think about it and possibly if we could move up a budget maybe. In upcoming year or whatever, how do y'all wanna handle this, I mean, you may just wanna. Move on, I don't know. I can go with this real quick, on our first page right here, what this consists of, this is just a quote. Uh, you know, we did our conference room. Conference room. So I got a price on, uh, painting the outside of the building, all the block. When you pull up to the show barn and you look at that conference room where it says Newton County Lifestyle Show Barn. Go into electrical panels on the left, starting right there, those electrical panels, the walls, the ceiling, the steel, the blocks. Come out the double doors by the restrooms, everything on the exterior, that ceiling, all the blocks, all the way back around. To the, uh, other end. That little porch, everything there, coming into double doors by the bleachers, opposite ends where the panels are at, ceiling, steel and all. Is that first price right there. That's relettering the front. It's painting the doors, ceiling, all of that. The exterior, getting it, getting it back up to form. I have some work doing on my part as far as leads on the roof, but I can handle that. And if the word wanna get real strong, you can move out to the arena out there as far as all the railing. Around the arena excluding the chutes in the back that are used for rodeo stuff that hadn't been used in a while. This price there excludes that. That second price on the bottom. A lot of manual labor in that caused the condition of the railings and whatnot. But it hadn't been maintained in years. So this is kinda giving you idea of. This excludes the main arena, arena area. Uh, those, there's five beams right in there in that ceiling that I didn't get a price on, but just kinda gives you an idea of where you're going. Uh, this is all the handrails up by the bleachers. Uh, there's some rails in the back by a little barn and, and everything I could find is for railings. And stuff is included in that. Moving on to the second page here is a, uh, quote of what it would take to upgrade all of our lighting under the, under the arena. And the both of the, uh, outskirts, left and right. Got the old high bay four hundred watt metal headlights there now. This will be, uh, labor and fixtures upgrading to, uh, new LED lighting fixtures. Um. We, we call them the UFO lights. Cause they look like a UFO. They're little round lights, LEDs. They're really compact. And so that'll be a, a straight swap out. Uh, only thing we would have to do on the county side. Which helps this price would be, we would have to dispose of the old lights. This contractor will take the lights down, the old lights, holler them up in one area. I suggest if we ever do this, we'd have a trailer on site. They can just put them on the trailer. We could put the trailer and dispose of the lights ourselves.
Don't we have? Above you? About above you somewhere?
Yes, sir, we do.
It don't work?
It works. It's awesome.
Okay.
We won't eat these broke.
Okay. And they don't.
Ken, I think getting, getting this information, we're. We cut you short a little bit, but we got to go down there. We gonna come back, I guess, and, uh. I don't know where.
Well, if they do this, we gotta have more books and.
Yeah, that's exactly what this.
Well, this is.
This is.
Idea.
This is just a real idea.
Have you got lots to do for the next thirty or forty minutes? Can he come back with us? Cause I do wanna talk to him about that.
When y'all gonna come back?
Coming back at about twelve thirty, one o'clock. Twelve. Twelve thirty.
We not gonna eat?
Yeah, but we need, we ain't gonna go with five minutes.
They probably got steak.
When are you coming back? Some of them will be back.
So we, we're recessing for an hour. That's what we're doing.
It's an archive building. They're having a presentation.
I'll.
In four minutes, I think.
Nah, I'll get you if you go with me.
Hey, you got that thing on. Great.
Let's get it.
Well, we like ten minutes before we go back.
Morning.
Oh, yeah. I tried to call you, man, tell you we, we'll back when you get ready.
Well, we, we've been discussing things, but we've been holding off till you got back. So we're gonna go back and session now. And the things that, uh. We just talked about.
The launching. The soil and water.
Yeah, it's the Soil and Water Conservation District is having their banquet on Tuesday, April the twenty fifth at six thirty. And they needed a head count of who was going this week. Your ticket's free and to carry your wife is twenty bucks or your girlfriend.
That will be for a dedicated account. You ever been to U G?
Well, I'm no good. I don't. I can't. I'll make my way.
Put me down for two.
I thought three. Yeah, they take her.
Well, I should have asked her.
She should have to go. She needs to. She's not gonna be big soon. All right, uh.
Are you gonna circle back to the bids? Could they can get out?
Is that what we have lighting now? Is the bids on the asphalt?
Yeah.
Okay. Which ones, which one of the asphalt bids we took under advisement?
Um, I'm looking at R and L unlimited.
R and L or option one?
And then Slocom construction.
And that from where?
Off toward.
That's off toward.
That's option two and three on it.
Yeah.
Well, for a reserve on option one and then option two and three.
Right.
And then an alternate on triple A construction.
Two and three. All right. I'll make that motion. Read that motion, Joe.
Joe Wally Zander made a motion seeking the county parish to adopt. R and L at twenty five dollars a ton for lane. Where Slocom is altered at twenty eight, twenty seven, twenty six, option three, Slocom at one seventy, one fifteen, one seventy fifteen, one sixty nine fifteen. Triple A as an alternate at. One seventy six, one ninety two.
That's the way you want to read?
Yeah.
Need to start. Any major stuff?
All right, babe.
Here.
Uh, Joe, anything?
Thank you.
Is that it?
Good job.
Good job, man. Make it work.
What, what, hey, George needed that. Thank you for getting insurance for.
Oh, yeah.
For R and L. R and L. Well, they're, they're supposed to be sending it back today.
Yeah, if it don't, then they'll be out. Cause those two will be in. So I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah.
They'll be eating you.
Oh, yeah, they.
All right, what else you got to do?
Uh, I need a special docket for, from the general fund to Neo Post, US Postal Service for eight thousand. This is for the postage machine downstairs in tax office. And from the post office to certain clerk for one thousand two hundred and sixty.
All right, back up eight thousand.
That's all, that's all mess. You got it?
Yeah, I got that. I'm talking about the postal service.
That's all?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm right.
Exactly.
All right, babe.
Here.
On page three, George, you see it?
I got it.
I need, uh, approved travel for Lisa Addy to the youth court training on the spring twenty twenty three conference in Biloxi, April twenty sixth through twenty eighth.
I believe it. So.
All in the book?
Here.
And that's all I got. Other than if you wanna go circle back to your bids.
Word, Jason.
He said he'd be back at twelve. He's gonna do hours worth of work.
All right, well, I need to talk to him. I've got some decent calls.
Okay.
I'm wearing it. Just scrap on there, go in there. And we will both be bidding the same.
You'll say.
I want my share.
He's gonna lay that for the hundred and twenty. Can he back?
Okay, Ken, come on back up. You know, you followed us. We, we need to discuss this a little further. What you got?
Yeah, there's a southeast of all. Mainest Tech Convention Center on Smoky Mountains coming up in the east.
Go ahead, man. Only a week.
Mainest has been Smoky Mountain out of Hawaii.
So moved.
We disapproved with him being a wife.
And your friends.
Those were just being a wife.
Yeah, you what?
That kid's all good.
Everybody's always doing something, so.
Yeah.
There you go.
Hey, so moved. Let's get it.
No, I'm good.
Get you trained up.
All right. Well, let me say, I, I've been trained pretty good last year and a half, right? For a lot of stuff. And we appreciate it.
I think everybody appreciates it.
So we went over all that I had to go over on this. And there was some missing about. Anybody else got any more questions on that or? All right.
See. Do we keep money in the general loan for show barn? Or do we have a show barn account or?
We do, but, uh, budget's like fifteen thousand. We've done some out of it already for the air conditioning.
Well, I thought about this while we were walking over there. You know, if we're gonna. It looks like we ought to stay there. We need, we need to do this work. I mean, we need to have, we need to make it look like something. Uh, you know, I, I was down there for four eights. You had to turn your light on with your phone to see if the light's working. None of that thing is terrible. And, uh.
Well, it's old.
You know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But if we're gonna bring it up, let's bring the thing up.
We've been there sixty years, man.
I don't wanna put a rooftop on it right after I come in.
I don't like the lights.
I don't like the lights.
Where'd you put it in the seventies?
I believe the seventies.
Seven and two, I think.
Yeah.
So you have a fifty year old. Oh. But what we can get away from this, you know, we, 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 we were looking at if something else come around, we're gonna spend way more money on this somewhere else.
But.
In my opinion, four eights and. Especially if we do the, the chute thing for the, the four eights and whatever. We, we don't need to say, yeah, no, you had to go on. We really need to look at this if we can afford to do it. In my opinion.
Well, those pretty hard quotes are just that much money that you get.
This first one gonna be pretty, that, that's gonna be pretty accurate.
Hard.
Yeah, that's gonna be pretty accurate. I love it.
Both contractors have been on site with eyes on everything. We discussed everything. Uh, but not what I'm expecting or what we're expecting. So, yeah, it's pretty hard.
But Ken, if we did everything as far as the painting and the. And rails, we're looking at twenty eight thousand dollars for that, right?
And we gotta, if we do this, we gotta get another quote.
I understand.
And you're talking about them in public.
Well, I just blew that, Ken.
No, you didn't, you didn't break it up.
Specifics.
Yeah, you didn't break it up. Just don't, don't break it up. I think where you're headed. But, yeah, if you take that and the other two, yeah, I mean, that's.
Should have wanted to hit. I didn't know you were going that way.
Well, he didn't give specifics. They wouldn't know how to break it up. Oh. Well, and that was my thing. If we're gonna look at it. If we're gonna keep it. We need to make it look like something. It'd be something that, that kids and the parents should be proud of when you have something down there.
Ken, is that replacing the lights out there in their room?
Yeah, the four eight big ones.
Well, that railing, I remember when you were here when redid that stuff. And that's been twenty years ago that it was clean and painted. Surely need to.
That's eight lights. Ain't that, ain't under the, under the cannon wheel?
Your bottom prize is something out there.
Yeah. Right. That's when Jack Winston was over with the salt pile of bacon, got us that, thinking the department had.
Top prize would be a big roll.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you had both of them, you had both of these, that would be total.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
So I had to break them down because I didn't know.
Right, right.
Go out there and look at those on the pole or, or what. So we have eight options. You know, uh.
Well, y'all are great. I would just say, Mr. Table this and let Ken get more quotes. And then when we got more hard quotes, we make the decision on what we can do, what we find money to do.
You like that happen, right?
Tell me, what, what do you do?
What I, what I'd like to see is if it's gonna be used, I mean, used, not once every six months.
Did you?
I think we need to go ahead and do something to it. But we need somebody that's gonna try to promote that thing. I know you, that was gonna make.
You said, in, in my mind, I, I help them. That's why Ken's going to the mountains next month for a conference to learn how to do that horse show up there too. I know. I'm just the old maintenance man around here.
Okay, but I've been in that building. I did a lot of work there. I, I mean, I, I personally. I don't ride horses and I'm not into all that, but I do, I have a vision for that. There's a lot of potential there for the future. Um. If we take the bull by the horn, so to speak, you know, I see.
But our insurance keeps nodding the thing, doesn't it? Everybody we rent that to has got to come provide that certificate of insurance before they can use.
I see a part position for somebody overseeing and promoting that and, you know, booking this stuff. If we could have something there once a month. Start with is better than what we're doing now. You know?
All right.
We did sort of have something.
But, you know, we, we, we're working towards a, a nicer, comfort room area that we can market towards businesses. Like, uh, the industrial setting that's in Newton, you know, Esco and Sawmill and places like that. Uh, I believe our National Guard folks come through once a year and use it for recruiting or something.
They were there two weeks ago.
I'm not sure.
On, on Saturday. They were there two weeks ago, so. They were, National Guard.
See, that's what I'm talking about. Things happen out there, but we don't know anything about it. Somebody needs to be in control of it. Well, somebody knows somebody, so they can just go do it.
I mean, the conference room is.
Those topics on that time.
Can be broken up as a different, uh, setting as the rest of, you know, who would rent that conference room? Wouldn't necessarily want to rent the rest of it. So.
All right, you got a Jesus for this one. This is kinda like step one, two. How many more you got?
Who knows? Oh, I got a, I got one's way out there.
No, I mean, just for maintenance, right? You got another step or two in the right direction. I guess you said didn't include any of the arena areas doing the poles or?
This one on painting restoration does not include the main arena itself. There's five beams that go across that process line here.
Okay, that's where you're gonna have your schedule for anything like that.
Yeah, he's, he's got prices on the front side and on the back side of it.
Okay, is he doing the rain that's in the open?
No, no, that's what he's talking about. That's the part that's not on there.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the roping, rowing.
The railing? Yes, sir. Is that what you're talking about?
Railing and chute.
He got prices for the lights.
In the bottom right there.
Yeah. Okay, we just don't have the, the in the middle there.
Got pricing for lights.
Just don't have.
And prices for the railing around. All, all the railing that's out there, hands down, is in here on the bottom quote.
Just the big.
Just the steel, yes, sir.
Okay, I believe it.
Just the steel out there.
Oh.
We, we, we. We got enough people I'd like to talk to about you getting that thing you were wanting.
Those uses, and I watched out that in the book, all this covered ring has come in. And we didn't cover that one. We put a top on it. We could have covered your ring. But that's what these older people go now. You can schedule a band.
Even that's right.
Yeah, and they doing it in Maridig.
Lauderdale, of course.
Well, Lauderdale's not right there. So I had a little Richard rodeo. Don't even go there anymore. They go Brandon. Well, and they used to go swap it out. But it went up too much on there. And they're not getting in very many people. That's the thing about it either. You can price yourself out of it.
And if they're willing to compromise on the environment, you know.
Yeah.
We could jump in there and be in the middle and draw them back to Newton County.
Well, it's possible to know the over there. There's some, you're gonna have to tell somebody probably in charge of it.
I think extension service would be willing to help us a lot there too.
That's one of the problems. Did get them in the four eights and the scoot. Let them get together. Cause they gonna touch all those kids anyway. You know, kinda. Oh. I don't have a problem, uh, if you wanna get more quotes. If that's a board wish, if we wanna get more quotes and look at it.
Might get more quotes on it.
I did first. Oh, one more thing, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Sedoma. Sedoma, Frigidaire and Brudy, do you know them?
I sure do, been around for a long time.
Can they work on these units?
That's a question I'd have to ask.
Well, we just got a bill of fifteen thousand dollars for labor on this other deal of the day.
I had six facets that got replaced.
Fifteen thousand?
That's, that's pretty high, we, I mean, we don't, we don't get to a point, I'm just gonna be frank, we don't get to a point, we're gonna pay that kind of money every two or three months.
Like, what's every month?
We need to start calling this stuff to the scrapyard place, and just open windows, get what you get.
Y'all, in my opinion, on the glass, really.
Oh. And, and, but, I mean, they're doing all the schoolwork now, I mean, Sedoma is, and they beating everybody else's prices.
You said Sedoma?
Sedoma, Sedoma.
Is he D O M A?
That's how D O M A, I think, Sedoma Frigidaire.
And they beating the pants off them out here, so, I mean, we need to take, if there's, if there's something there to take advantage of, we need to, and if they can work on these units, they'll be here in thirty, forty-five minutes instead of a day or two.
And what do we paying for them?
That's right, so, I mean, if the board's okay with that, we need to let him contact them, get them up here and look at it, and see what they can offer us.
I think, I think when we maybe tie the end of this roof because we're under warranty, and I think they're, they're an old Samsung technician, Saudis.
So, in other words, we just home, it's another one of the things, we love contracting, I mean, we love it.
But, you know, starting over, starting fresh, in a, in a different world, direction, oh.
If, if you're not worried about warranties.
That's what they'll run into if they don't have a warranty, if somebody else works on it.
Well, I, I've seen that, here, here's my next thing, let's say the downstairs was working the bar, we could go ahead and.
And they're starting back, no one got it.
We could get in with this one, if they would bid it, put new stuff from downstairs, and as it goes out, that's just other bunch of, who come up here and work on what level, under warranty, they swap it as it goes out, in other words, go to something new and just get away from this junk. I think is what I'm trying to do, but I don't know how we need to do that, or how we're gonna need it, with that to be it, I know with that to have them to be it on a new system.
What, it'd be over five thousand?
No, I mean, on a new system, in other words.
So, I'm all for, you know, local contractors thinking about, I'm getting it all possible.
I, I think if y'all agree, that Steve and Ken, all that, all these guys, especially since he's over, they don't know where our problem is here, tell them we, we can maybe bid in a new system in parts, in other words, like, I don't know how many systems there is for this whole courtyard, but let's say there's six, as one goes out, there's four, as one goes out, we'll replace it with something new.
How much longer we got on warranty, two years?
Yeah, one's goes fifteen grand.
Yeah, that one can't work in there.
They were talking about the warranty group, I'm sorry.
He told us that they had two years, and when everything said the new compressor, and they were back to ten years. I'm not even gonna hear that, I've done, I've done it all here.
Every new compressor he replaces, that's what he said, you don't get a ten year warranty.
You get wherever's left in his old, is what he said.
Only thing we got a ten year warranty on is now on one.
Well, then this is a no brainer, see, I thought the way he talked, we gonna start back with ten.
You've noticed.
Well, then we got, we got about seventeen or eighteen months, and this system's out of it.
Some of us were under the same assumption, but it's not, not the way it is, from, from the brand new product, from day one, you get ten years, if anything happens, happens in the middle, or some, under the original warranty, it gets replaced, but that does not start the warranty over.
It just finishes out the term.
Yes, sir.
As in?
Then we need, we need to do, we, we need to bid then, or let somebody advise us, and that's why I said, see if they wanna come and look, because, you know, everybody, they might have a particular system that they like better than others, I, I don't know, I don't need to know that. But, if, say, they, say, say if theirs was good, because I know that's a good brand, say theirs was good, and, you know, they could tell us, well, we can say, we can say, this, this system, we could come out, we could put this system back in, and it would work, and this would be standalone, and then the next system, and then what's level would be standalone, whatever. And it won't cost half a million dollars, that way you would do it, yeah.
Would you recommend a standalone for every office in this courthouse, or a combination?
I, I don't know if a standalone is possible for every office.
Don't too much.
Well, you can have verbals, a signal height and stuff also, you know. Something like, similar to what we have now is, is the best stick we have.
Similar, but not.
Similar, yes, similar.
In other words, instead of going to mountain, going to, to the hills over, the rocks, it's about that, yeah.
Yeah, the way he was talking, when he could come in here, the, you know, the warranty that we have, and, and, uh, we didn't, we, we didn't, I thought he said two years, what about two years left on it all, is that right?
Oh, but this downstairs is not.
No, 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 right, so, I thought we need, yeah, we'd, do anything we can to better, but we need to better than need to, and I for this bit, a complete system.
At one time?
One time, you have to go to Bain Broadway.
Okay, that being said, uh, we have a compressor that is due hopefully first of next week, that should hopefully get us through the summer, all our downstairs is not working, which already downstairs is not working.
This is the one that John told us.
Yes.
Will be in.
Correct, ho- hopefully next week, okay, we'll get that installed, and we get that back up and running. Do y'all want to come to a stopping point and say, okay, we're good, thank you, or we'll call you if we need you and stop spending money on it?
I think so.
No, you're gonna have to let them go.
Just let them go.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
No, you just don't say no, because they ready to do the other stuff, they ready to do the work. So, they gonna forget you, then, if they're ready to. Well, once, once that, the bid goes out and they find out that we're not gonna honor them, or, that, that stuff, we're gonna change over.
That's still a good stopping point.
If you advertise today, I suspect you'd be lucky if you got anything in for Christmas, or it could be longer than that, it'll take two years.
You better work on this warranty, yeah, yeah, but I, if, if. Well, I'm not trying to stop anybody, I just know this, we've done it for the last five or six, since this system's been in here, it never worked right.
Oh, still wait.
And, and, hey, somebody somewhere got a better deal, and, uh, you can't expect people that's enclosed in buildings that they're not, I mean, sweating, computers and stuff, I mean, that's the bar.
We got to.
We've all talked, and we waited this last year.
Well.
If we advertise, if we advertise, no use. Submit, submit unit to committee, so. We could open it, just like the weekend, April.
So, we need more specs than them, that, yeah, what, what we had talked, what we discussed.
That's what we, we had discussed, was getting.
Accountable engineers.
Or.
And we're not saying back for, for Mississippi State.
Yeah, but they're on spring break.
That's what we have. We've already, we've already agreed to do that, right?
Yeah.
I, I've already contacted them, waiting on summer.
That's our first step.
Yes.
So, if we, if we get him, then we're here next week for the next, the first meeting of May, we might have their specs and hang, and then we can put it out.
I don't know about that, yeah.
Maybe by July.
Yeah, probably, that's true, then.
And I think, but if you get it made, if you don't, you won't get it to office. I don't know, because, alright, we still gotta wait on that, but we do anything in there.
I'll say that after this next compressor installed, we kinda, we'll, we'll be a, a good stopping point with our current.
Well, tell them we stopped, and just tell them, well.
So, I guess that's more than we ever start.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I, yeah, that other unit, it's possible, there's nothing that hasn't worked yet, and you know it well, so, we all know it, you gotta try what you gotta try, so, go ahead and get them to install it.
Don't let it get us something coming up. You better have somebody retain it to do that.
But we can.
We've had, we've got about. We've got twenty units.
I don't know this, I'm sorry, one of the units is duct taped, in my experience, they probably did plenty of that.
Beggars can't beat chickens.
You get me some conventional, uh, standard units, while we got in our other outbuildings, that, hey, I can work on, but, you know, we went back to chill water and a boiler, I, I worked on that stuff back in the day, you know, my other maintenance, uh, side, but, you know. Other than this stuff here, I'm not.
Hold our pipes or whatever.
Yeah, we all need pipes, yeah.
Some more than a lot, somebody's gonna do that, regardless of whoever, you can't keep a system back in here, put something here, some more going to do it.
I don't think we really need another.
Boiler system.
Another unit that only three people in the work, work on.
That's true.
We don't need to.
I believe something, something similar like this, you know, I know it's, has been costly with, if it is economical, you know, from a power bill standpoint.
Well, yeah, but don't, don't play no power.
Enjoy it.
First three years.
Uh, let's move on some more.
That's the short of it.
Ken, thank you.
Hey, yes, sir.
You gonna get some more quotes, we'll talk next time.
Yeah.
I got you Ed Jurnan and Big Mike.
No, I've got one I'd like, you gonna do a bit.
But you gonna find them, right?
Oh, yes, only eight feeters.
Gotta be a brand.
Yeah, I, what it is, enjoy stuff, the small trash, that broke one, rolled off, I got all pieces of.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of the asphalt.
I got all the pieces of ours, and both of them, both the pieces of ours, they're scrapyard, and they're in a problem, when it better come out there and get low, that's fair, right, can't we?
Is it described in the bid?
It was according, whoever was talking to these folks, they, either one of them said they would buy it, or out it, but whoever they talked to told them it would come, it would come, but it's junk.
I don't think it was junk. That's more of a haul it. George, all you posted was like tractor.
Is the mower still on the end of the door?
I have no idea.
You'd have to.
It's about fifteen or twenty of them toward down.
Declare a surplus and re, put you another bid out for that part.
For the side part?
But, but, took a think about.
Well, I, I was just trying to.
I'm, I'm saying, that's a tractor, go, that's a tractor, always is.
If the, if the mower's not on there, then you haven't got any problems.
It's not.
You've already declared, you've already declared that part surplus. But he's gonna give some price without the mower, with, without the mower.
Well, yeah, he's the best deal, he's, uh.
So, we need to make a motion to declare that scrap for surplus, he can.
Hey, I'm just talking to you.
It is a pile, I got about. Oh, alright, oh. Oh, that's a next one, I'll call them both today to make sure, because I won't let them on Sunday, that will do something. No, I'm.
Yeah.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll take that today, that one.
Alright. You making the motion for John Juck for, thank you? No, do you have anything?
No.
Jackie, you gotta explain, did you put on that?
I was gonna, I was just gonna mention on that building that we are taking back from Ed Lee, Charles and I went out back from him last time, and it is totally, I mean, it's clean to the horses in there, but the roof is bad.
And he's up there and do it, no?
I, I don't know what he's up there and do it.
I've already sent them an email asking about what it would cost, you know, we, this came up about a year ago when they wanted us to pick up insurance, and at that time, their estimate was about a thousand dollars to cover it, but I.
You talking about massive?
Yeah.
You better tell them to buy it to back.
So, anyway, I've sent.
Yeah, because that thing says, when we sign it, it's, their insurance is gone.
That's why I bring this up, I'm, I'm not sure when our insurance is running out, so.
Yeah, and I, and I reached out to the, to, to Will, but he's on vacation.
I got three forty-six, we start tearing down, see.
I read the thing, it says, when this is signed, their insurance is gone, and I signed it, I hadn't recorded it.
A lot of the insurance may be over for it, then.
I'm gonna tell you, from what I've seen of the building, it, it, it wouldn't make much sense to insure.
No, I mean, I'll be saying, if, yeah, if somebody goes in there and gets hurt, that would be a trouble.
Oh, oh, that's a, that's a, that's a. I tell you, the next step would be to tear it down, the top of it, the top of it rotted, I mean, it made flat, and it's just rotting, falling in chunks, it's got good steel beams. It's got just the good steel beam, but they're not like the beam yet now, it's, it's gonna do a pretty good job tearing it down, it ain't gonna just put one wall, it'll, uh, it's got a lot of steel structure inside, but, uh.
That's the only reason I'm bringing this up, we need insurance, so.
That's right, okay.
And there's nothing, I mean, the gate's wide open, from a security standpoint, we probably need to do something there, I don't know.
So, just let another get it back?
Do what?
Just let another get it back?
The week, uh, me and y'all was talking about, the only way to do it is to, to secure it, would just be dump dirt up around it, because it's, it's a bit of traffic using and going in, out there, and just dump it up the streets.
That's where I have some gates built, it'd be a pretty good job building.
Oh, man, you don't wanna spend the money on that thing, and getting the, the gates ain't worth, you know, I mean, you could, yeah, just dump dirt there where nobody get in there, and then start tearing, how to get a date, set a terrible, that's why we're laying asphalt. You get the building. Building, of course, that building is not, it's not, boy, that, it's not worth that even owning, and that's the reason they got rid of it, because the industry left, but the building's falling down on.
They made a good place to stand, like.
Now, the front part may be good, we didn't go up in the front part, the front part may be good, but the back, I'm talking about the north, this would be the north side.
No, I mean, that's what we're coming at. Yeah, two people with two little feet, get on that four side, that'd be a good place, fire alarm, or leave a little convert, considering.
Fire department.
Did the old burn?
On that building, that's straight, it'll do it.
Too much metal.
They burned brick, you know?
They just got all.
The bricks may have to marry.
Yeah.
I said, why all the walls on a brick? Brick wall, all the way around, old, and they bustin', and they chipping off.
Put it out, put it out there for the beat, see.
Rip rations, standing rip rations.
Well, I'll be tired.
Did you see a man turn?
I don't really.
Getting next to the head, most of them, fourteen days.
I got some time.
There's somebody that do it.
Oh, let somebody do it, but.
Might take three years to do it.
I got a hundred pounds, I put them up there.
Well, let, I'm not under bound to do that.
We'll see.
So, it's gonna dump dry well, if they can drive, and blow it up, it's supposed to be the next thing.
I'll tell you, they, they the only way to secure that building, I mean, you build a fence, a porch and fence, break the wire, they still going in.
And you could come off, you know, you could come off Highway fifteen, I mean, the backside.
I see, that's a rough.
No security fence around, woods out there.
Oh, you thought, yeah, walk in the water around.
Oh, yeah, my.
Somebody won't sit there and get in there, maybe have a question about it, so I think whether we think the building is insurance worthy or not, from a lot of good standpoint, we probably don't ask them to add it.
Okay.
What y'all think?
It, it's something.
Jason, I've got the, I've got the request, yeah.
Okay, we've got the request, that's all we do.
So, Jason, do I need to report it, or wait till we know that we got insurance?
I mean, as soon as we hear back from it, it'll, it'll be back, it's like when you buy a car, I mean.
Alright, I'm not going to report it for later.
Yeah, should. Maybe this afternoon, no, just don't.
We can get, we can get three alligators, just take down.
That might be different, somebody get it.
So, our last three worked, I was still, yeah.
You go.
Can you just get a phone?
Can you just get a phone? Go ahead, Ken, I'm probably, I'm surprised, I'll profit it down.
I'm probably, I'm surprised, I property down on the middle road, there's a tree in the creek, and I'm the one that property right now. And this is gonna cause a problem with that bridge down there. Uh, when it was, you drive, I'm gonna go in there and see if I can get that tree out of the creek. I got some big covers I'm gonna put in, I already got some of them in, and I'm gonna need some dirt. And the only dirt place I know in, be one down in certain that I can get dirt from, be at the landfill. So, uh, I'm gonna probably get some dirt on that southern end on the landfill where we, uh, where we hit the timber.
You like.
And, uh. I got three votes.
And look, I mean, it's all again, so ain't no way.
Well, I'm gonna do it anyway. I'm gonna do it anyway, I just try to be nice as well. That's all I got.
Okay, well, this, I, I imagine when you buy that for a hundred, you, you wanna know it in the next minute, it'll be fine.
It's, it's not designed that way?
Yeah.
There's something else we're supposed to do, right?
But we're gonna talk, circle back on that burn, the man came and used.
That's right, that's right.
You know, I don't take DQ and.
Here he is right here. I like it.
I like the way it sounds, it doesn't, you know, and all, but, uh. It's like everything else we had to do, they're gonna be under our umbrella of, of, uh, DQ.
My question about that is, when you revise your solid waste plan. You know, solid waste plan, it, it says that that stuff has to be covered in the landfill every so often. So, if that's in our plan, that's probably gonna come out of our plan if we go this way.
That's what you say a lot of.
That's why you come out and revise in the plan to indicate that we would allocate a certain area, an acre and a half, two acres, to, to store our.
You'd, you'd have to get your engineer to do it.
Debris.
Cause this, this letter here says, the attached amendment to our plan of operations describes the process. We have also included a psych diagram showing the proposed operation. So.
Something on the code.
We have, uh, Jimmy Kimp did the original solid waste plan. For this to be.
So, you just need a, just need a map showing where we're designating the area.
You'd have to amend the plan. You'd have to describe the process.
You got the bit.
So, it's more than just the letter.
You know, we could, we could do it on other side roads in that dirt field.
And if I'm not mistaken, Kenny, though, then the plan has to be approved, and then we've got to send it to all of the surrounding counties and cities?
Yes. For their, for. Yeah, they give, um, Marty, because they got a conference coming up, and I know Trent gonna be there.
He could talk to him, right?
Yeah, they just talked to him about.
Which is y'all's stuff. You going out there for sure?
No, I'm gonna be on, what, what I'm giving a dirt is not classified landfill. It's not on the list.
It's not on the place.
Not on the plan.
What'd be wrong with setting it up, we're wearing the old dirt field. Smooth it up, setting it up out there.
Really? And you get the plan fixed, we buying plus.
Yeah.
You get that fixed, we buying plus.
You really don't wanna do that, because I spend a lot of time on wood, just living, clinging out downstream, down by Turkey Creek, because of all that sand. Going out there, stop the flooding that guys fielding, and I have to go in there and take a truck, so we get all that junk out of there.
I'm getting.
Alright, we gonna talk, talk to John, and tell him, or send this, send this to him, let him look at it.
I think, I think they're saying, give, talk to Marty and let Marty take this to the conference. I know what y'all say.
I know they got a conference coming up, yeah.
You're not, you're.
So, that's my.
Yeah, somebody.
We done got tried to change the plan, and that plan is over. Usually big like a little thief. Anything they add to, anything that happens, I'd say I'd quit. He said they all will be liable. They got their own insurance. That automatically puts them under your plan.
Ken, didn't you say you knew this?
April fourth through sixth.
I hadn't talked to Trent Jones in a long time.
April fourth through sixth.
April fourth.
Six, yeah, that's just a couple. But I get in contact with.
That might be a good question, Charles, if you don't mind. You talk to him.
Well, I mind. What you talking to him?
You mind?
Yeah.
But you talk to him.
I don't like it.
You know.
No, I don't know, but I like it. Well, I'm gonna play this. Better take, just slide that right up the well, I guess. When you need it, go back to it. We've been all this, you know, this week, and you start messing with that.
Oh, I know it. You, Dave, you don't worry.
Um. Well, we gonna wait for Marty to come back, see what he learns, or if he knows anything about this.
Ken, he gonna contact my man at DQ.
Yeah, I talked to Trent, but I want Marty to be involved in it, because they, he had sent off a search flag, he's for due count.
Steve, can you give Marty a copy of this and be sure he does that?
Yeah.
He's not my guy.
We all run. We already done?
Give it, give it.
You make that mark, you know.
I don't know, I gotta work.
They have all the. Alright, so you. I don't.
I gotta go to DQ's court.